Morning. Morning and welcome to the March 26, 2019, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you're, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Stoppfer, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you report out on closed session?
This morning, we were able to get to two of the seven closed sessions, so the two that we were, they were able to hear. Item three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, there was no reportable action taken. Item six, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Andrew Greer and Golden State Herb Incorporated at All, V County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV43460, there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Are there any announcements from the board? Seeing none of their announcements from staff. Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Ed, please.
I'm Ed Lark and as most of you know, all of you know, I manage the public access television studio. And you're certainly familiar with what most things happen there at the studio, but I'd like to bring you up to date briefly on things that go on behind the scenes that are really worthwhile to know about, which you don't know. And this is the reason I'm doing it. For example, several years ago, it might have been now as much as 10 years ago, a young man by the name of Manuel Crosby attended a series of my classes, 10 weeks. He was inspired and he went on to attend UC or at Southern California, got his degree in Film Arts. And then at the same time, another young man by the name of Darren Knapp also attended the class and he continued to work on short films. Well, a few years, just a few short years ago, the two of them worked together to create a feature-length film that was purchased by one of the largest film distributors in the country. They're now working on their second feature-length film, which is just about finished, and they expect to have that released in the fall. And they started out here at the studio. So I want to bring you some thoughts about the value that this studio provides to others. In another case, there was a father and his son attended class and the son went on to work now for the film industry in Hollywood. Then there was still another one, a mother and her son attended, and after that period of time, they are now doing commercials all over the country. Then there was a father and his autistic son attended the class. And while it certainly didn't cure the son, but it did improve his condition. And so these are just a few of the things. One other great success was a young gal by the name of Shasta. I won't give her last name, many of you know who I'm talking about. But this was, let's see, now is about eight years ago. She was only 13 at the time. She took the class and afterwards she approached me and said, you know, I'd like to do my own show. And I said, and I could see she had talent and she had drive. I gave her the chance and today she's still doing it, eight years later, does two shows a month. And last year, she was hired by Channel Eight in Sacramento to do commercials for them. She also was hired by the professional hockey team in Sacramento, not Sacramento, in Stockton, I'm sorry. And she did interviews for them all last year. And when she was preparing for shows last night, two of them she had scheduled, she got a telephone call from the largest Christian radio station in the country, which happens to be in Rockland. She had applied for an internship that would pay. And she, they had hundreds of applicants and they narrowed it down to seven, she said, where they had individual interviews. She was one of the seven and she got the job.
Wow.
Yeah. And I'm sure there are other cases that where the studio has helped people, helped train them, or gave them experience to go out on their own. And I just appreciate the continued support that the board provides. And I also want to thank you very much for providing the necessary funds that I will need to upgrade the camera equipment in the studio. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Chair. Supervisor Mills?
I want to add to Mr. Lark's comments, and he's not a lightweight when it comes to a lot of this stuff. If you've never seen his documentary on Finland, go take a look. It's an excellent portrayal of what that country's like. And as a Swede, I appreciate, appreciate you doing that.
Very much. All right, other staff announcements. Madam Librarian, excuse me, Dr. Clayde.
Thank you. I wanted to update you on a health situation that affected our community recently. On March 13, an international flight landed at San Francisco International Airport where a family from the Valley Springs area was onboard. The next day, Thursday, the 14th, the family returned to the Valley Springs area and one of the children became sick. The child had not been vaccinated for childhood diseases. On Friday, the 15th, the child was taken to Mark Twain Medical Center for evaluation, was sent home, diagnosed with a routine virus. The next day, Saturday, the 16th, the child returned to the emergency department, was again seen, waited in the waiting room for 30 to 40 minutes. The family got frustrated, they took her to the hospital in Jackson, and the child was evaluated, again diagnosed with a routine viral illness and sent home. On Sunday, March 17, the mother took the child to UC Davis Medical Center where the child was admitted to the hospital because the kid had developed a rash illness at that point. The child was then diagnosed with measles. So during the time before, between when the child became sick and was finally diagnosed with measles, there were significant exposures to multiple members of our community. So what we had to do in the, in the Health Department is run this all down. So the Health Department conducted contact investigation with over 40 interviews with members of the community. We had to find out who was potentially exposed, we had to assess whether or not they were vaccinated against measles, whether or not they were immune. We had to quarantine several household members who were not immune to measles themselves because they also had not been vaccinated. And we developed a press release that was sent out to the, to the local press, you may have seen that. We had what's called a provider alert, where we send information to the medical community, notifying all the doctors and clinics in the area about what's happened, so they can be on the lookout for other measles cases which might pop up. And we've communicated with the local hospital, Mark Twain Medical Center, and through the Health Department in Amador County, Sutter Amador Hospital in Jackson, where they've had to also assess all the potentially exposed people, generate a line listing, and all those people have to be monitored for symptoms of measles themselves. So we're continuing to monitor the situation and we'll have to see if there are any other cases that are going to pop up in our community. But we feel confident that we have a handle on what's happened and we'll have to continue to monitor this. But I wanted to make a message for, primarily for the public, about the importance of vaccinations. And this is a case, a good example of what happens when a child is not fully vaccinated against measles. You travel internationally, you get measles, and you bring it back to our community and you can potentially expose other people. So you don't get your first measles vaccine until you're one year old, then you get your second dose around kindergarten time, four to six. So if children are under one year of age, they're very vulnerable. Pregnant women can be very vulnerable because exposure to measles during pregnancy can cause birth defects to a developing fetus. So this is serious business and it's an example of what happens when the community is not adequately vaccinated against routine childhood diseases.
How's the child?
The child's recovering, so we've dodged a bullet, the child's recovering, and so far there's been no other cases of any other residents in Calaveras County who've developed measles, what are called secondary cases.
Supervisor Stoppfer.
Thank you, Dr. Clayde, for doing your due diligence on tracking this down. We appreciate it and the work you're doing to protect the rest of the community.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I'd like to echo that as well. It was impressive to watch the public health machine kick into gear and their training came into impact quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for communicating with the board.
I'll let you know if there's any other developments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our librarian, Nancy.
I brought Show and Tell today, as good librarians do. Thank you for letting me share with you, Nancy Guinness County Librarian, and I wanted to share with you a wonderful thing that happened in our library this year, and that was a grant from the Calaveras Community Foundation, which allowed us to really expand our STEAM education program for our children. In the library, we were able to purchase two carts and cases for our 3D printers. And by the way, if you come to the library Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you will likely find the 3D printer in operation, making some fun thing. And I think Supervisor Gary Mendy's son made a Dungeons and Dragons character on it. So we're having a lot of fun with that, but the cart and the case make us much more able to move it around and use it. We've also put one of our carts and 3D printers in the Copperopolis branch, so we're being able to expand that program. The main thing, though, that we've spent the money that they gave us on our kits for our children, you remember, we had the first five grant and we started with our little leaper kits. There are 15 of these that teach children basic science. This one happens to be a water cycle kit. So the child takes this home, there's a book about the water cycle, and then a little experiment for them to do. These just fly off the shelves, they're now in about three of our branches that have room to store such things, so we're very happy about that. The Calaveras Community Grant allowed us to make two other levels of kits. We wanted to also have kits for our school-aged children, and these are our STEAM Pioneer Kits, they're all in a backpack like this. And there are topics such as pulleys and drives, physical forces, magnets, there are a bunch of Lego kits that are the moving, the moving Lego that the children just love, and even a solar lab and solar power kit. So these kits are for our older children, basically grades three to six. So we saw a gap and the friends of the library generously donated the time of one of their part-time employees to create a third level of kit. These are also STEAM Pioneer Kits, we call them our junior STEAM Pioneer Kits. These are basically for children, kindergarten to second grade. And they have, this particular kit is dendrochronology. And what's inside here is a tree cookie, a little slice of a tree, and the child counts the rings on the tree, and then they read a book about trees, and then they talk about how old were you when this tree was born, or how, you know, old was this tree when you were born? So things like that, they dissect an owl pellet in one of the kits. So they're great things, these are more for the ages kindergarten to second grade, and then starting with third grade, those, the more advanced kits. So without the help of the Calaveras Community Foundation, we would not have been able to do this. We purchased kits that were already set, we were able to purchase the cases, the backpacks, the, all of, everything that we needed to make this a success. And these things just fly off the shelves, they are all online, if you want to check out what we have, just put in the word kits in your search on our, on our catalog and you'll see the whole list. These are moving all around the county because people from other branches can put a hold on it and then we send it up in delivery. So it's just, it's really wonderful and without the help of community, especially the Calaveras Community Foundation, we would not have been able to do this. So I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank them for that. I will be on Ed's TV show tomorrow night, also showing these kits. So we hope to get out the word because we want these to be used. They're wonderful, they are so educational and really enhance what parents can do at home to continue helping their kids with STEAM. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. And our libraries are real treasures in our community, so get out and see them and tell your friends about these great opportunities, and thank you so much to our librarian. Other announcements from staff? Seeing none, we will move forward into recognition and acknowledgements. Madam Clerk.
Item eight is from District Two, to adopt a proclamation recognizing the earned rank of Chief Petty Officer by Jillian Zahnheiser in the U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps.
I would like to pass this to the supervisor who represents, or the district she lives in, Supervisor Stoppfer.
Well, we've had a little.
Come on up.
We heard Ed Lark speak of a lot of well-grown children in Calaveras County, and here's another one today. Whereas U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps, USNSCC, is a federally chartered nonprofit youth organization for students that provides hands-on military training aboard U.S. Navy and Coast Guard ships and shore stations, as well as extensive participation in community service for students ages 10 to 18. And whereas Jillian Zahnheiser joined the USNSCC when she was 12 years old, and whereas Jillian is president of Junior Interact Local Chapter of the California Scholarship Federation and French Honor Society, and whereas Jillian was the Girls State Program Representative for Calaveras County, and whereas she has received a congressional nomination from U.S. Congressman Tom McClintock, and whereas Jillian participates in numerous community services, activities, and trainings across the county with the USNSCC, and whereas Jillian has earned the highest rank of Chief Petty Officer with the USNSCC. And therefore, I was gonna wait.
Any comments on the board?
I have a question.
Supervisor Mills?
How many have attained your rank in Calaveras County?
Zero, I would say.
No, one.
One, one.
Okay. So it is, it is quite a marked achievement for you and also for your family.
Thank you.
Who have supported you through this entire time. So hats off to you for your effort and hopefully you'll continue your career.
Yes, thank you very much.
Public comment?
We appreciate your dedication. You've aspired to a level that, you know, many of our other children can look up to, and hopefully more will fall in your tracks in the future, and we thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
I would like to echo Supervisor Stoppfer's comments. I've watched you play sports at Calaveras High School, you're a top student and a real leader, and we know there's great things in the future for you, and we're proud of you in Calaveras County.
Thank you.
Très bien, mademoiselle.
Merci.
Well, there you go. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Oh, okay.
Chief Petty Officer.
Just a little, just a little something.
Chief.
I wanted to thank the board chair, Jack Gary Mendy, and Ben Stoppfer for being my supervisor at District Five. Just a little bit about me, I've dedicated my life to public service in the United States Naval Sea Cadet Corps, and I am so grateful for the opportunities that it has afforded me over the years, from traveling across the country and across the ocean, to the people I have met along my journey, and the skills that I have developed that will help me throughout my life. I'm extremely humbled to be promoted to the rank of Chief Petty Officer, and I would not have made it here if it weren't for this incredible community, my amazing teachers and mentors, and most importantly, my parents, who have been with me every step of the way and pushed me to be the best I can be, no matter what obstacles stood in my way. Thank you all so much, have a nice day.
Thank you. What's up, your parents doing for our motion? We're going to do, is there a motion from the board?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Move by Supervisor Stoppfer.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Now?
Therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors would like to extend its congratulations to Jillian Zahnheiser for her hard work and determination in achieving the rank of Chief Petty Officer in the U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps, and express its appreciation for her dedication to the county and its residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's get the parents up here for a photo, and Supervisor Stoppfer.
Squishing like you like each other. There we go, Dad, all right. Okay, smile. One more time. Thank you.
Item nine is from First Five Calaveras, to adopt a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Calaveras County.
Shall I read the proclamation, then you make the presentation, Robyn, or do you want to go first?
You could do that.
All right, well, this is, this is something we are kicking around up here because Supervisor Calaveras shouldn't need it.
Read the whole page.
If you're gonna read the whole thing. So if I can, proclamation declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Calaveras County. Whereas children are the future of Calaveras County and deserve our most committed support and protection, and whereas child abuse occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and lack of knowledge and skills to effectively cope, and whereas child abuse includes general and severe neglect, physical, sexual, and emotional abuse, and whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safety and nurturing for their children, and whereas our community and families are strengthened through social connections, relationships, knowledge, support, and resilience, and whereas every child is one caring adult away from being a success story. Be the one. That is, that's the proclamation, and is there any public comment? Robyn, do you want to come up?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you guys for all wearing blue, and all of the supporters of children here that are, that are wearing blue, and if not, we also handed out our lapel pins that are the pinwheel this year, so thank you for wearing that, and when people ask, then you can tell them that, what it represents, it says on the card. If anybody here would like one, just please let us know. So I'm Robyn Davis, and I am First Five Calaveras Program Coordinator, but today I am here with the Prevent Child Abuse Council of Calaveras. We have our council members and our partners, Health and Human Services Agency, CASA of Calaveras, and the Resource Connection. So yes, it's, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we are also inviting all of our school districts to pass a proclamation, as we did last year. They are critical partners in helping us to, you know, recognize when children and families need some extra support. So home is a place where children should feel safe, protected, and loved, and yet most abuse happens in the home, rich or poor, by someone that the child knows very well, usually a parent or someone very close to the parent. And there are a few situations in Calaveras County, like the rest of the nation, where child abuse occurs, where neglect, emotional, physical, and sexual abuse happens. One of those is multi-generational abuse, where often families are isolated, family members can remain silent about the abuse for decades. The second is probably the most common that we see are families that are really struggling economically. They may have insecurities about their housing, very common, about food, and about the needs of their own children, and they're in survival mode, which is really hard to function in. And the third is when a parent or caregiver has a debilitating illness, usually this is an alcohol or a drug addiction, it may also be a severe mental health disorder that impairs them from providing safety for their kids. And with all of these situations, this year we're seeing an increase in domestic violence. And so when there's partner violence and children are witness to that, it's very traumatizing for them. And so with abuse, we, we know that children are so afraid and they're so uncertain that they remain silent. And so it's up to us, you know, as adults and as community members, it's up to us to help identify when there is abuse. So how do we do that? If we know our neighbors, if we know children and families, we need to make sure that they have the community supports that are out there, and there are plenty of supports for families. We need to ensure that children have at least one committed and caring adult in their life who provides their safety and love and is, takes the time to value their healthy development. And each one of us in our community can be the one for a child through mentoring, through friendship, taking the time. We can also be the one for an adult who is going through, who wants to change their life for the better. The final thing that we can do is that anyone can report a suspicion of child abuse and neglect. It can be anonymous and it can save a life. So the main reason that we're here today is we have a couple of presenters that I've learned they're turning their trauma into something meaningful and beneficial. We had three presenters, but this morning, our youngest presenter who is, I'm not, I don't know where she is, and we're very concerned about that, but we do have two speakers here today and we're checking in on where, where our other one is, and make sure she's okay today. But our speakers today are, I've learned that they were strong enough to seek support when there was a crisis, and they are resilient enough to be attaining their goals. I'm very honored that they're here today, I'm very honored they've joined our team and they're going to speak with you, and then they'll be going out and sharing their story with others in our community to create awareness. Because one of the most important things that we can do to change behaviors and to let healing begin is to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm a little nervous, so just bear with me. Okay. Hi, I'm Rebecca Phillips. I currently live and have lived in West Point, California, Calaveras County for 27 years, give or take. For me, my life fell apart when my mom passed away and my security net, my security and safety net died with her. My choices weren't the best after that. give or take. For me, my life fell apart when my mom passed away and my security net, my security and safety net died with her. My choices weren't the best after that. I went to using drugs, not only that, I sold them as well. And honestly, I didn't care about anything, and I definitely didn't want to feel anything. At this time, I didn't even think I had a problem, or who I hurt in my addiction. In my world, everything was fine. Being titled as bad girl isn't all that. Trust me, I found out the hard way. I knew I had to change me and what I was doing and my life the day that my boys were taken from me. That day was November 7th, 2017, the worst day that I've had to live with, the guilt of letting my boys down. It was that day I made the choice to change my life, turn it around, and willing to do whatever it took to get there, to make a better life for me and my boys. I realized that I needed support and help to succeed in this battle I am fighting, and realized I've had it all along, and that was my sister. She has been there for me from the beginning. She's the one I called if I was struggling or having a hard time and just wanted to give up. So I would like to thank her for all she has done and is still doing for me today, as well as those who have, who have and still support me in my recovery process and help along my journey. So after making the changes I've had to, still making changes every day for bettering my life, it's made me stronger, opened my eyes to all I've done to get me here. And it was not, I was not the nicest or smartest person. And let me tell you, it got me in a lot of trouble, but here I stand before you today, clean, sober, and healthy. I got reunified with my boys after 13 long, hard months on December 18th, 2018. It was the happiest day I've had in a very long time for me and them. Knowing that I did it, continuing my sobriety and take it a day at a time and keep pushing forward. After hitting rock bottom and finding it had a basement, I would not be who I am today without my past and finding the light at the end of a very long, dark tunnel. I would also like to share this as well, don't give up. When I first started this recovery process, it felt like I was going eight days a week nonstop. It felt so overwhelming. With my story and recovery from addiction, helping others with support, just being there when they feel alone, or they have nobody else, or just being a shoulder or an ear, or if I can, advice from my experience, being a positive influence and/or a mentor to reach out and being there for others that are fighting the same battle that I am today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tracy. Um, hi, my name's Tracy. I have two stories, one, when I was a child, and two, when I had children. They are related. My mom was working to put a roof over our head and put food on the table, and that was it. She did not, she did not give me love and protection. We lived in apartments, and my grandma lived across the way. She would look out the window to see that we weren't dead. We were pretty much on our own. One night, when kids should be around the dinner table, I was dragging my mom out of her house, telling her she needs to come home to take care of us. It all fell apart. At the age of 14, my mom married Roy, a man who was fresh out of prison and a drug addict. That was when the sexual, that was when the mental and sexual abuse started to happen. It went on for many years. When I started to try out drugs with my parents, my mom and Roy told me that it is better to do it at home, so that became a regular part of my life. It also, when the sexual abuse begun, begun. Roy had told me he was a hell's angel, and I was afraid of him. In those hard times, I gave birth to three beautiful children. A little after that, I was 23 years old, I got the strength to tell myself, I am done. My kids and I moved in with my grandparents, and then I met a wonderful guy, Matt, and his beautiful little girl, Serenity. I got the courage to tell Matt about my past. And Matt and his Aunt Pam took me to the police station to file a report of my abuse. And now Roy is serving 15 years in prison. I thought it was over, but I was wrong. I turned to drugs to deal with my pain from my past trauma. I took drugs for four years. There was a lot of fights between Matt and I. We both wanted to stop, but we didn't know how. Then I had to deal with my grandma's passing. Soon after, there was a house fire. One night, I left the kids alone at home, sleeping, and came back to the house on fire. My daughter Katie woke up, her siblings, and got them safely out. Josh went back in for the dog. Thankfully, no one was hurt. I can't see. CPS was called. They took my kids, and we went to jail. I felt like my world was crashing down. I told intake officer that I felt bad, that my grandma's house, my grandmother's house had caught on fire, and I wanted to apologize to her, but I couldn't because she passed away. He told me that I could show it by doing things, by doing the right thing, by getting off of drugs and getting my kids back, doing things better and doing things differently. Soon after we got out of jail, Matt and I started going to NA meetings, substance abuse classes, parenting classes, doing all what CPS told us to do. And now here I am, a year later, I got my kids back, and we are doing things differently and better. We have a routine. We sit at the dinner table every night as a family, living life happy. We are clean and sober and with our kids. We came through this together, Matt and I. I had that one great guy by my side, step by step, all the way.
Thank you. Chair, she made me tear up.
Those women were amazing. Thank you for inspiring all of us in this room. I'm Farah. I am the Program Coordinator for CASA, Court of Special Advocates, and we are an organization whose main focus since its inception has been becoming the relationship in that child's life when there's no one else around to stick with them. We match adults with children who are in the dependency court system, hopefully one-on-one, anywhere from newborn to 21 years of age. But there are many organizations in this county who step up and help kids in need. They are the people who are the one for these children, and they might be even there before they reach dependency court. I'd like to invite the Board of Supervisors to help us celebrate all of, all that we're doing in Child Abuse Prevention Month in April, but also concluding on April 24th at the Master Gardeners Garden at 5:00 PM is our Third Annual Light of Hope Ceremony. In partnership with Prevent Child Abuse Council, Health and Human Services, and Resource Connection, we are focusing this year on celebrating the people who have been the one in a child's life. We would like to have your input and the community's input to recognize people and nominate people who have stepped up, doesn't matter if it's social workers, coaches, therapists, who have been there for a child and have demonstrated that. We're taking nominations at this time, and we'll be taking so, some more nominations through the middle of April, and then we will be recognizing them on that day, the 24th. Judge Sanders has graciously, graciously said that he will come and attend. So, think of people who have made a difference in your child's life, or you've seen them at school, teachers, coaches, and make sure that we keep continuing the Light of Hope, that through support, we can prevent child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comm, public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Mills?
I'll be more than...
I just want to thank all, I want to thank you two women so much. It's really courageous what you've accomplished and been here today, and I want to thank all the staff and volunteers that make our community, our children are our greatest resource, and you are protecting our greatest resource, and thank you so much. Is there a motion or further discussion from the board?
No.
Microphone. Moved by Supervisor Calaveras.
I'll second.
Sorry, Supervisor Mills.
That's all right.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you so much. Now, therefore, I'm sorry, it's a pretty emotional presentation. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, on the 26th day of March, 2019, do hereby declare April 29th as the Child Abuse Prevention Month in the County of Calaveras. Thank you so much.
So, can we have everybody in blue come up?
We're not done.
We'd like to ask everybody that's here in blue, that's supporting children, if they can come up for a photo.
They're here to support this, you are in blue. Go up there. Go up. Welcome. Thank you, Farah. Good to see you. Thank you very much. You've got to get in the picture, Farah. You're behind people.
I think we've got some little steps involved.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we've got to get, yeah, squeeze together. Diane's going to have to open the doors and stand back outside.
Okay, you guys ready? Holy moly.
Duck and roll.
I've got to get back far enough, sorry. Okay, so, if I smile, say cheese.
Cheese.
Okay, let me get another one.
You're going to have to do a pano.
You know, that probably requires a lot of talent, I don't count.
I'll get it for you.
Okay, ready? One more time.
Cheese.
Cheese.
Thank you, everyone.
Cheese, what a bunch.
We're going to do a public comment and take a break.
Yes.
That's why I asked, was asking how we wanted to do this.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Woo.
We're going to, we're going to try to get back on track here. Okay. Madam Clerk. Okay. Thank you.
Diane, do's Facebook.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this morning? Hal?
Was he in line?
Nope, they're just coming in.
Hal, Hal Segal, Taxpayer Association. I'm, I'm speaking in behalf of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. I received an urgent alarm from them, which I've emailed to you. Action needs to be taken by tomorrow regarding an attack on Prop 13. The, this action alert, we need to combat this newest attack on Prop 13, which is Assembly Constitution Amendment Number One. This measure would make it easier to raise property tax bills by lowering the two-thirds vote for approval of local bonds and parcel taxes to just 55%. This is to fund an unlimited number of infrastructure projects, including affordable housing. The time to take action is today. Tomorrow is going to be a hearing. They'd be heard by the Assembly Local Government Affairs Committee Wednesday afternoon, and please call the legislators that are indicated in the email I sent you, as well as our representatives to express your disapproval if you disapprove. The parcel taxes are very regressive in that all property owners pay the same amount, regardless of the size of the home or business. Also, numerous parcel taxes have been approved since 2010 with the two-vote, two-thirds vote requirement. There's no need to lower the threshold. While everybody gets to vote on local bonds and parcel taxes, only property owners pay them. Everybody votes for it, but only, everybody votes for only a certain class of people to pay a tax, which is the property owners. That's not fair. We need to protect the 54% of Californians who own homes and continue to demand a supermajority threshold to authorize debt. California does need more affordable housing, but adding hundreds of dollars a year to property tax bills, when California has the 15th largest per capa state and local property tax burden...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this morning? Hal?
Did you read lines?
Nope, they're just coming in.
Hal Sagala, Taxpayer Association. I'm speaking in behalf of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. I received an urgent alarm from them, which I've emailed to you. Action needs to be taken by tomorrow regarding an attack on Prop 13. This action alert, we need to combat this newest attack on Prop 13, which is Assembly Constitution Amendment Number One. This measure would make it easier to raise property tax bills by lowering the two-thirds vote for approval of local bonds and parcel taxes to just 55%. This is to fund an unlimited number of infrastructure projects, including affordable housing. The time to take action is today. Tomorrow is going to be a hearing. They'll be heard by the Assembly Local Government Affairs Committee Wednesday afternoon. And please call the legislators that are indicated in the email I sent you, as well as our representatives, to express your disapproval if you disapprove. The parcel taxes are very regressive in that all property owners pay the same amount, regardless of the size of the home or business. Also numerous parcel taxes have been approved since 2010 with the two-thirds vote requirement. There's no need to lower the threshold. While everybody gets to vote on local bonds and parcel taxes, only property owners pay them. Everybody votes for it, but only...everybody votes for only a certain class of people to pay a tax, which is the property owners. That's not fair. We need to protect the 54% of Californians who own homes and continue to demand a supermajority threshold to authorize debt. California does need more affordable housing, but adding hundreds of dollars a year to property tax bills when California has the 15th largest per capa state and local property tax burden in the nation will not make either homeownership or apartment rentals more affordable. The best solution for affordable housing is to remove the governmental roadblocks that prevent homes from being built to the excessive delays and excessive expense. That's a no-brainer. If we can do that, then we have more affordable housing because the market will take care of supply and demand of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Other public comment? Jason?
Good morning. Jason Campbell, District Five. I'd like to raise some awareness of a couple of great organizations, local organizations today. The first one being Foothill Little League. Their opening day is not this weekend, but the weekend after that. And if...I'm here in hopes to potentially generate some more community love and support and possibly some funds also to help both of these organizations. As before mentioned, the Foothill Little League, my son Jacob is here representing them today. They have a great raffle going on with a lot of great prizes. The tickets are $5 each. If you...anyone interested, you can talk with me or him later this afternoon to find out exactly what those prizes are. The second organization, and my daughter is here representing that today, is Mindy's Top Hat School of Dance. Another great organization. And they are also trying to generate funds to send the girls to Disneyland to dance in the Disneyland Parade in July. There's a few ways that we can do that. They have a recycling drive going on. The dance school location is across from the feed store in Valley Springs. So if anybody's still inclined to drop off any type of recycling there, whether it be cans, glass bottles, scrap metal, anything like that, that'd be much appreciated. Also, like I said, my daughter Annabelle is here with me today representing Mindy's Top Hat School of Dance. And Easter's coming, and we have plenty of sweet treats with us today. Sees candy, multiple flavors of the eggs, and a couple of assorted boxes. If anybody is interested in that, please feel free to see us and inquire about it later this afternoon. Thank you. Have a good day.
Jason, and thank you guys for coming. Other public comment? Seeing none, I'll kneel you up.
Sorry. Thank you. Man, I have a sheet of paper made from my mother made for some stalks of my plants. Feel free to write notes on it. There's no THC in it. You can't...even if you smoked it, you know, you'd be okay.
The world's largest zigzag?
Sir? Yes.
What's it made out of?
The stalks of my plants. My mother's a master paper maker.
Yeah. It's beautiful paper.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Neil.
Okay. The affordable housing crisis has never been worse in California. Governor Newsom declared an unprecedented preemptive state of emergency this week, which included backfill property tax losses for Butte and Lake Counties. Why are we not included in this group? Should we not be seeking similar funds rather than splitting it up out of PG&E settlement funds? I did a quick inventory last night. There are three units in Valley Springs, the most affordable of which is an RV spot for $425, but you need an RV. Two units in Murphy's, the least expensive, a two-bedroom for $1350. Six units in Angel's, one-bedroom will run you $850. Four units in Copper, a two-bedroom will run you $1195. In San Andreas, there are five RV spaces for $595 each, plus your own RV. That is a total of 20 units, including RV spaces, across the entire county. Worst of all, there are no rentals available in the SCAR, neither McComme Hill nor Mountain Ranch. There are only 24 total real estate listings for single-family houses, condos, and mobile homes throughout the entire county at this moment. Only 102 houses have been rebuilt out of the 548 permitted structures that burned in the Butte fire. Nearly an additional 400-plus inhabited structures burned and displaced just as many residents as those that had permits. The affordable crisis has never been worse in Calaveras. The Economic Development Director is focused on manufacturing as a solution to the lack of employment in the county. Where will these new workers secure affordable housing? The Calaveras cement plant in San Andreas used to be an economic driver for not only District One, but the entire county. The cement plant possesses the potential to provide a distribution point for locally and sustainably sourced rebuilding materials. The CDFAs just approved the list of approved seed cultivars. Hemp farmers' failure to grow an approved cultivar with appropriate certificate of analysis for verification purposes will be summarily abated once all alternative remedies have been exhausted. Manufacturing hempcrete could revitalize the lost industry. Please consider voting against the continuation of the moratorium. We need housing and employment solutions from the county that will enable businesses to capitalize on the symbiotic benefits of combining old and new technologies with the citizenry's right to farm in Calaveras. Thank you.
Neil. Thank your mother. Bonnie? Sure.
I was born on Benjamin Franklin's birthday. And one of the things that he said was, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." And this morning, we heard a lot of people talking about recovering from drugs and other things. And I believe that that is a good thing. But I also believe that it could be prevented if people weren't promoting government-wise drugs and trying to get taxes off of them. And in the meantime, those drugs are poisoning people's minds. Those drugs are poisoning people's minds and their bodies. And it isn't just the drugs, it's also the chemicals that are used to grow the drugs or, you know, and I'm not just referring to marijuana.
It's not...you can talk.
Thank you. And on top of that, there is a housing shortage. And one of the reasons there's a housing shortage, that many houses have been ruined by growing marijuana in them. And it hasn't stopped, it's still going on. And as far as the hemp issue is concerned, I believe that there's wonderful products that can come of it, but I also believe that the Sheriff's Department needs to be supported. And one of the ways to support it is to continue the moratorium on hemp in Calaveras County because it's just a subterfuge of angle to grow it and then at the last moment, get rid of it and get their money. And in the meantime, the Sheriff's Department is cut off. And so anyway, I feel like I keep saying these things, but other people say the opposite. So I feel like I need to bring out the other side. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Russia, if you're listening, and I know you are, I hope you find all my emails. I'm not afraid. I don't have a computer, I don't have a cellphone, or a text, or a Twitter, or any of those things. No one really knows what a danger and a threat I am. No one knows what my demented mind is plotting and ruminating on. Because if my thoughts were to become emails, I'd have the FBI, the CIA, the KGB, the district attorney, the sheriff, everyone would be dragging me out of the house in shackles. Fortunately, I don't. Today, I'm going to breach the topic of home care, my main crusade, with no diversion or distraction by politics, I hope. 330 home care workers in Calaveras County have been quietly toiling away for years without a valid contract. It seems as though I'm the only person on this planet willing to stand up and speak out for these self-sacrificing people. You don't hear our union, SEIU 2015, broaching this oversight. You don't hear the manager of the public authority standing up for the home care workers. You don't even hear the Director of Health and Human Services raising the issue of this neglect by our leadership. It's shameful. All of these aforementioned agencies and individuals have systematically enjoyed pay raises, step increases, COLAs, longevity bonuses, vacations, sick leave, health benefits, et cetera, except home care workers. It's shameful. The real workers, the home care providers, whose job is often cleaning up feces, vomit, urine, and blood, don't have a fair shake. In our community, there are those who need our services but don't qualify for Medi-Cal, the lowest of low income, those who won't apply for it because they don't want social workers judging and making determinations on their living situation. And this county desperately needs a system in place where these individuals who require assistance can avail themselves of those who can help. Approximately 2,500 people in our county have been fingerprinted and background-checked. Only 350 are working. This oversight needs to be addressed. It's a resource Calaveras County can benefit from.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public com...Al, so you're speaking? Is there anybody else after this? I'll see you'll be the last speaker before we go on break.
Hi, I'm Alice Montgomery. We live in District Three, and I'm inspired and encouraged by a lot of the young people I saw today. That was very cool. Those kids are our future and the young people as well, and they're really working hard to make their lives better and the community better. I'm here to offer you hopefully some helpful information about the general plan as it relates to the cannabis studies and also the EIR. I believe that we needed to finish the general plan before we can launch off on anything that offers a new industry. So there, I'm sure you're all aware of, the Government Office of Planning and Research. It's the umbrella organization over CEQA, the general plan for all of the states, counties, and cities, and many other programs. On February 26th at about 3:20, I got very lucky to be able to speak with the Director of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. She affirmed that we must finish, not be in process, finish the general plan before any other industry we should even be working on anything else. So I thought I would talk with you about that. I would like to also talk with you about the EIR. Our EIR is a perishable document. It's kind of like your income taxes. That's a snapshot of your finances for one year. So our EIR that we did right around the time of the UO, it was good for that, but the litmus test is, has the environmental risk changed? So we took a snapshot of the risks, the parameters, the area, and sometimes people do it for projects. The risk has changed since the time of the UO, it's gotten worse. So we cannot reuse that EIR going forward. I need to make sure that everybody understands that. Also, we've kind of thrown something else in the mix by entertaining the idea of maybe testing, or processing, or distribution. That really renders the EIR null. So I need to make sure that that's clear. And what you do with that information is up to you. Peter Maurer is wonderful about administering our EIRs. I just want to put that forward, and hopefully this information's been helpful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And that we will close public comment. We're going to take a 10-minute break. As a board, we will reconvene here at 10:20. Welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We will take on this consent agenda now. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
There are members of the board that want to pull an item from the consent agenda. Seeing none. Is there staff that want to pull an item from the consent agenda? Public? Want to pull it? Pardon? Mr. Sagala, item 12. Bonnie? 12 also.
Number 12.
12. Any others? Seeing none? Got a motion to accept the remainder?
Remove the...I will move the remainder.
Moved by Supervisor Mills.
I will second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Item 12...Item 12 is from the Community Development Block Grant to authorize the discharge of uncollectible debt for one community development block grant in the amount of $21,845.90, and a budget transfer requiring a four-fifths affirmative vote to increase the appropriation line item to allow the auditor controller to process the discharge of debt.
Mr. Sagala, you had a question? Ms. Newman, you had a question? Go on. I'll go first.
Thank you. Al Sagala, Taxpayer Association. I'm also a licensed real estate broker, and there's some questions I have regarding this. This money, this $22,000, belongs to taxpayers. It doesn't belong to a committee or anybody else. So it seems that at some point in government, there should be an effort to protect the taxpayer's money. And generating legal expense is not an excuse to harm the taxpayer by discharging this money, which would be in effect a gift of public funds. And the reason why I say that is that in California, this is a deed of trust state, which means you don't have to hire attorneys to have a foreclosure. You have to contact the trustee or substitute trustee, file a notice of default, not very expensive at all. And then there's 90 days for the property owner to respond and cure the amount. And if it's not cured, at that point, there's an additional 21 days for the sale. And before the sale, at any time, the amount that's foreclosed on could be cured. And curing it, in addition to the amount owed, there's also trustee expenses, which are not much, and advertising expenses to advertise the notice of default and to advertise the notice of sale. Okay, so we don't need a bunch of attorneys if there's a deed of trust involved here. First question I have was a notice of default filed. The second question is, did the ESCO instructions on that sale, were they signed by the buyer and the seller, particularly the seller? If the seller was aware that the instructions omitted the loan that he owed, and he signed those instructions, he's saying that there's no loan on that property. This is pretty serious. We recommend leaving the lien on the property. There is an innocent person here, and that's the There is an innocent person here, and that's the buyer of the property. Should extend every effort to try to allow them to be protected while they take action against the seller, who is the real culprit here, not the county.
Thank you very much, Al.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Yes, good morning. Fortunately, I had a chance to catch Kristin before the meeting, and a lot of the questions that Al had and I had were answered by her. But this is a federal grant, comes from the federal government, and there was a lack of oversight in managing this whole process here. And I read the options that you all have, and I don't often get a chance to read your backup information, but I do not think that the buyer should be held responsible. And apparently, in order to collect this debt, it's going to cost more to track down the out-of-state seller than it would be worth. So that's why I would recommend that it be, whatever they're saying, that discharged, that the debt be discharged. But I think in the future, there needs to be more monitoring and oversight of how these monies are spent because, or how these monies are granted, because to me, $23,000 represents a 25-cent raise for the home care providers in Calaveras County who haven't had a raise in nine years. So every little penny, every dollar, every thousand, $10,000, $100,000 could be used to better benefit than just fritter away money and not make people accountable for it. Anyway, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you. We'll close public comment on that item. Kristin, do you want to provide a rebuttal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Kristin Brinks, Health and Human Services. So the two questions of which Laurie Adams from Adams Ashby is here to get into the more specific details. The two questions, just to reiterate, were a notice of default, was a notice of default filed, and was ESCO intentions signed by the buyer and the seller? So Laurie's going to answer those.
Hi, Laurie Adams, Adams Ashby Group. I work with the County Department of Health and Human Services, correct, Kristin? Okay. And helped manage your portfolio and the funding that you receive from CDBG and Home related to these projects that were loaned over the years. This particular project was in 1987, so it goes back quite a ways when these programs were first being introduced into the state and communities were accessing the funds. This particular situation that's outlined in your memorandum, as has been read by the commenters, was an item that came about through a title process, and you were not notified of the sale, nor was it reviewed prior to the close of ESCO. So the buyer is an innocent party. The gentleman that had the loan was aware of the loan and did not divulge that, nor did the title company actually do the proper research on that. So this is a very, very unique situation. It's not normally how the processes are ran. We have not started foreclosure process. That's one of the options that you have today that we have considered. And the cost associated with that is not just the cost of the process, but it's also the staff time that goes involved, that's involved with that process as well. And all of those things and items were considered as we looked at the costs and, you know, are we going to be spending more money to collect the money than we actually would receive in the long term, which would then expend more taxpayers' dollars in collecting that number of dollars for the program? And those were a part of the process that we went through when we presented the options to the board. I don't know if that answered all of your questions, or did you have a follow-up?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Moved by Supervisor Callaway. Is she second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Stopp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want five minutes? We're going to take a five-minute break and then come back. Board Supervisors, we are set up and ready to go. Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-one is from Economic Development to receive a University of Nevada Reno Alert Wildfire Presentation Regarding State-of-the-Art Fire Detection Cameras.
Welcome. Good morning, Board. Kathy Galino, Calaveras County Economic Development. Today, I have Dr. Graham Kent, who is the Director of the Nevada Seismological Laboratory and Professor in the Department of Geology, Sciences, and Engineering at the University of Nevada Reno. He is also the Chief Architect of the Alert Wildfire Camera Network System. He attended San Diego State University, where he studied geophysics, and graduated valedictorian of his class in 1985. Thereafter, he entered graduate school at Scripps Institution of Oceanography, receiving his PhD in 1992. After a four-year-long appointment at Woods Hole Oceanograph-- Ocean-- I can't say it. That one. Institution, Graham returned to Scripps to continue his work in geophysics with an emphasis towards seismic studies ranging from magma chambers beneath mid-ocean ridges to fault hazards and tsunami at Lake Tahoe. In 2009, Graham moved to Nevada, where he helped the University of Nevada Reno lab move towards an Internet of Things approach to rebuilding the seismic network and, more recently, leading the design and build out of the Alert Wildfire Camera Network System and early detection of fire ignition sources. He is also involved with the Great Nevada Shakeout Earthquake Drill and earthquake early warning in California, while setting the stage for adoption in Nevada. Together, the system is designed to provide hardened communications for all hazards throughout a redundant mesh microwave network. Please join me in having Dr. Graham Kent here.
Doctor, thank you. We'll see if that works. There we go. We're ready to go. I'd like to thank Chair Garmendi and the rest of the supervisors for inviting us to come give a presentation. I think you're all going to be really excited afterwards. This is kind of the presentation we gave last week at the CPUC meeting in Sacramento during the Wildfire Technology and Innovation Summit. We're almost in Calaveras County. We have a site going up in West Point, but the Tower at Red Corral was so tall that it took us all week last week, so we'll be back in West Point pretty soon. And as you'll see, there are a lot of opportunities here, especially working with Conifer Communications, to be able to get out a network, not in three years, not somewhere down the road, but get it out before fire season. But we still might need your help, so that's why I'm here.
This fire season?
This fire season. Yeah. Just to give you a sense, I don't want to ruin, but we've put out about 110 cameras since late October, a hundred cents Christmas, and we hope to have another 50 out in about a month and a half. So we are full steam ahead in the state of California and some other states. So why is a seismologist here doing fire cams? That's kind of right. And part of the truth is that we build out communication networks, and we bring back seismic data, and we wait for the big one, and the big one never happens, and we get bored, and that's half the story. But the other half is, we all have our fire stories. So my wife and I were burned over by the Cedar Fire in 2003. So the new normal came early to us. Unfortunately for your county, it came in 2015 with the Butte Fire. This is just an example of just a single image of about 100,000 from Santiago Peak to allow Cal Fire, Orange County Fire, some Forest Service folks kind of better understand the explosive development of the Holy Fire. And as you can see, you can kind of see what's going on. This is a FOSH check from a V-Lab. I can also see down there where the camera's pointed at Troy Whitman from Southern California Edison, having pointed at 1.9 hours ago at 11:45 in the morning. One of the things we want to make clear here, and this is a very important point, and this is a camera that the state parks in Orville allows us to co-op during emergencies, and we'll be placing one of our own there soon. But this is 35 minutes, critical 35 minutes of the Camp Fire out of paradise. At 7:02, the fire's barely 30 minutes old, and yet it really hasn't developed a plume head yet. It hasn't really made its run. Within about five minutes from 7:02, you start seeing rapid development and spread. Thirty-five minutes later, you have a monster. One of the things it tells us, and we already know this from any number of fires, is that window to do something, to potentially knock that fire down, or if you can't do that, to get people out, notwithstanding the traffic, right, issues, but getting people out sooner will get more people out. We have a very narrow window of time to get on top of these fires. And that's important because, obviously, as we'll see in the San Diego County model, we've been very successful these last two years, working in coordination, where cameras play a part, but not the only part, in knocking these fires down. The other thing I would say is, and we know this from San Diego County where the work's been done, if you look out the last 10, 20 years, 30 years, and you go look at the windows, those windows of time where you can have very explosive wildfire behavior, right? Like in 1923, when the Berkeley Fire, not the Oakland Hills Fire, burned down the Shattuck, five, six thousand houses lost in Berkeley. But that window opened up that one day, but it didn't rarely open throughout the '30s and '40s and '50s and '60s. Nowadays, these really bad windows open up once a month, twice a month. And so that's the climate change signal. It's not, oh, it's hotter, or it's colder. It's that the windows where you can do the greatest damage, where the Butte Fire can take off, or worse, when the Woolsey Fire or the Camp Fire takes off, we're having more of those windows. So there's more opportunities for this explosive behavior, and it's a quicker pull on getting these fires out. And so that's what we're going to tell you how this all comes together. So Alert Wildfire is a consortium of three universities, Nevada, UC San Diego, and Oregon. It started as Alert Tahoe in the Tahoe area, and one of the first fundraisers, an NGO called the Tahoe Prosperity Center. Because in the end of the day, you don't have economic vitality if you're getting burned over all the time. If you don't believe me, go talk to your friends over at Lake County. And over the next five years, we were working with BLM, Forest Service, NGOs like the Tahoe Prosperity Center. And then we managed in 2017 to work with San Diego Gas Electric. And we ultimately helped stop what everyone thinks was a multi-billion-dollar fire. And then it worked again this last year. And so after what happened in the North County and happened in LA, and, well, excuse me, in Santa Barbara, Ventura with the Thomas Fire, the major utilities were all in. But it takes time. You just, you know, we had 100 cameras, and it took us five years to get there. So now we're in the process of building out 1,000 cameras in the state of California, and obviously, we're in other states. Nevada, of course, where we started from. And so part of the things that we want to do this year and in your county is to make sure that you have the ability to have these cameras out. And the good news is, we're not here asking for money, because these cameras are being paid through the utilities and other organizations. So what it might just be is land use. So we'll see that in a minute. Here's an example of three fires. The one on the right's the Tulley Fire, one on the left is the Rock Fire, and then just a little bit to the right of the Rock Fire, you'll see chewed up is the Seven Lakes Fire. All three of these were discovered. There were lightning strikes. We have a lightning interface that makes lightning discovery pretty easy. And the more important thing is, this is about 45 minutes after discovery, is that folks at Sierra Front, which is our local inter-agency dispatch center in western Nevada, were able to send both aircraft and trucks rolling probably 10, 20, 30 minutes early on these three fires. And it was important for the Rock Fire because it was right next to a neighborhood. The other thing I hope you look at or see is that, wow, that's some clear imagery, right? And guess what? Every one of you could have logged onto our system and time-lapsed the situation in real time so you could understand your own situational awareness. So folks around San Diego County, Lake Tahoe, when there's a fire, everybody jumps on the cameras to make sure it's not next to their house. And what we're also finding is, sometimes they're watching the cameras, and they'll tweet out or contact us that, hey, there's a fire on one of your cameras. And lo and behold, a couple times, actually, the public has discovered their own fires to help us out. And that will become important in the future. So why is Alert Wildfire spreading like wildfire? And one of the interesting things, not that this isn't a good thing, but it isn't actually the thing. It's not that we have this auto-detect, because that AI thing isn't as good as you think it is. And so we're working on it with folks at Lawrence Berkeley Labs and other universities. Here's the thing, if you ever go over just down the street, a couple hundred yards, and go sit in the Cal Fire Center, the ECC, and wait for a call to come in, and I know, I haven't been in yours during fire season, but we were in St. Helena, for example, just this last summer, before we had cameras in North Bay, and a fire came in during the Ranch and River Fires, burning just out of control, and now another fire crops up at Berriessa, near the Lake Berriessa, and then a second call in, and everyone's panicking because now, my God, we got the Mendocino Ranch Complex burning, and now we got another one, Lake Berriessa. They diverted two aircraft to go dump. Guess what? No fire. It wasn't there. False alarm. Half of what comes in, at least in my area, is not even a real fire. And of those that are real, you know, when you see that, I don't know, maybe it's like Jay Leno or something, and they ask to get a map, and hey, where's California? And it's Mal, going, no one can point on a map. Well, guess what? That same person's calling in a fire, as happened in North Bay, and this person thought it was Pine Mountain, but it was actually Geyser Peak. That's 15 miles away. And had they not had the cameras at the time, the strike force would have went out and essentially tried to find a fire that was burning 15 miles away. Guess what? Took them 20 seconds to figure it out. They dispatched it in the right area. And that's the biggest gain that you will get, is allows folks over at your ECC to essentially know immediately if there's really a fire that's taking off, or if it's misplaced, or if it's just unable to find ultimately. That's one way of reducing that time to strike. And the other thing is, to scale up. I've now looked at fires for five years by more than any person on the planet on HD cameras, and you know right away with our time-lapse function, is it blowing up? Is it setting down? Well, guess what? If you don't need to scale up the normal response you put out at dispatch, you save, well, somebody saves 90 grand. Or if you need to double, triple it, or the folks in Idaho at NIFC is looking at it as well, and they need to send more aircraft as a regional shift, everybody's watching the same template. Everybody gets to see what's laying out. And you get to follow that fire from start to end, and if you need to have an evacuation phase, everybody understands right away what's going on. And then, you know, we're about 20-some years past, almost 30 years, the Tunnel Fire in Oakland Hills, but that was a fire that was put down, popped up the next day, three-some billion dollars of damage, 21 lives lost. So these cameras will sit on fires for days afterwards so they can make sure as they-- because again, it's a big orchestrated move during fire season, because you got people here, and then you got another fire pop up here, and so they're able just to watch it from a camera and reduce the number of people there so they got people to go somewhere else. One of the things you get to do if you all want to go back to kind of the beginning of your life and become a firefighter, is you get to go on live view. And so when there's a fire, you move it, or hopefully, there's not a fire, but if there is, you move it towards the fire, and you just watch it live in HD. This happens to be the Perry Fire northeast of Reno, Nevada, and this is during asset protection. That's the NOAA radar dome. If that gets burned over and lost, the Nevada airport goes down. So here's BLM fighting this fire. Paul Peterson, four seconds after he moved it, he's the Fire Management Officer for all of BLM Nevada, and they're watching this and making sure that the assets are protected on the mountaintops as well. But you get a live view. But you get a live view. But for the public, you'll go onto a website that looks like this, and you'll get to pick your area, like the Tahoe camera sites, and you'll, this is the way it looked in 2017, and you'll have a whole bunch of different cameras to pick, and you just click the little thumbnail, and in the upper left-hand corner, this happens to be Red Mountain during the Lilac Fire, and there you get to see a bigger picture, and if you right-click it or touch it on your iPhone, you get to see a time lapse, so you can see fire behavior. Or during a lightning storm, we, or as in the ECC, will move the cameras around and park over lightning strikes, and just get the time lapse until it first puff of smoke, and sometimes it never happens. For the public, you can also see where the cameras are pointed in the view shed, and if you go up to the little menu there, you can actually cross two cameras, and it's what they'll do in your ECC, and they'll be able to locate it right away, so they can dispatch to the right location. And again, sometimes it's 10, 15 miles away, because somehow geography wasn't loved enough by the students when they were taking it. But we really developed as the 21st century crowdsourcing of fire lookout towers. So we have programs, for example, in Orange County, physically disabled people are volunteering now to man the cameras during red flag days. We recommend your county do the same, whoever wants to be in. Because even if we got artificial intelligence doing it, we got the cameras at dispatch, we want the public involved. Because it's all about reducing the time to understanding where the fire is, and what needs, and how it needs to be hit. So here's the time lapse of why it's important. This is, this isn't the Car Fire in Redding, this is a couple years earlier, 20 miles south of Paradise, and this is this torn attic behavior again. So folks at Grass Valley ECC were watching this and realized, that's not a good situation. That's a very dangerous situation. But also, the rest of the world could log onto our cameras and watch this as well. So again, we got to have everybody on the same page. We have to build a system that works, and so our system is on Amazon's S3 bucket, which means it scales infinitely, which really means is a million people can hit the cameras in one minute, and the only thing that we have to worry about is paying the bill. So we're using the same stuff that Netflix is using, you know, what we all do at night, but we're using the same infrastructure as Netflix to make sure that that is delivered properly. And again, it's important. And what we're really doing too, is it ends up being kind of a weather camera system, and we're tricking everybody to go, hey, if you're going to go to the beach, you're going to like go skiing, we want you to learn to use the cameras, because when it's that bad day, you already know how to use it. So that's another thing that we've noticed. All right, so back to the San Diego magic. This is December 7th, and thankfully, in some regards, it wasn't a day that would live in infamy for San Diego County, although there was loss of life of some horses, which I don't want to understate. This was the worst burn index fire day in the history of San Diego County. We were burned over by the Witch Fire. There's, I mean, by the Cedar Fire, sorry. The Witch Fire 2007 was actually the worst day before this. We knew this for 10 days going into this event, that this was setting up to be potentially the worst day. And the reason we knew that is San Diego Gas and Electric has a whole weather meteorology kind of branch of their company that does supercomputer modeling, and they start about 10 days before a Santa Ana, right? Not just Santa Anas, but that's the most typical situation. Three or four days before December 7th, the Thomas Fire took off, and was it the Skirball and the other fires up in the LA Ventura area? Our friends in San Diego were freaking out, because we knew that weather was setting up for the Santa Ana of all time. And it was delivered on December 7th. Burn index was like 250. You start panicking when it's over 50. Now, here's the deal. They were essentially up, especially those three days before this event, they were burning the county down 100 million times every six hours. And the reason they do this is they want to know for a given wind direction, humidity, maybe the winds could be a little bit bigger, a little bit, the humidity's up and down, they do this what's called Monte Carlo, but they kind of just shift all the different bits and pieces around what they think the model is. And they make a threat map, and based off that threat map, they start turning down, turning off their electrical circuits. And the reason they do that is they know if a spark starts here in San Diego County versus here, this may not be a big deal, even on this day. This is a big deal. And so they have to turn off the electricity, because if something starts, now guess what? They still did that, and a Winnebago caught fire on the side of the road, just north of Escondido. And that was the first image from Corey Costa, CAL FIRE Montevista Unit, six seconds into turning the camera over there. And I always tease that, I said, Corey, how'd you do it so fast? He goes, my mom lets a quarter mile to the east. So he was worried for a personal reason. That gave Chief, CAL FIRE Chief Tony Meacham, the piece of information he needed, along with the other 15 cameras in the county that showed no other smoke plumes. He took every resource he had, he had 40 trucks on the road in three minutes, right? SDG also had pre-placed their air assets, including a Sky Crane helicopter. So this thing was hit in a way, as Tony Meacham testified in front of the San Diego Board of Supervisors, in a way that he would have never risked without having these cameras. And this Lilac Fire was knocked down at 4,050 acres. Everyone thought it was going to burn to I-5, if you're familiar with 15 in the I-4 corridor, that's a multi-billion dollar event, potential loss of life. And this is what it looks like in super duper time lapses. This fire was followed from four different cameras the whole time, so that CAL FIRE and San Diego County Fire and Forest Service working together could make the best attack on this fire throughout the day. And if you look in the back, you see a smoke plume just jump up. And that's interesting, because that was a fire in Mexico, but not much. And normally, they would have had to pull fire resources off the Lilac, in case that was in California. And they knew from triangulation right away with Inseco, that is, unfortunately, it's Mexico's problem, we're keeping everybody on the Lilac. And again, this is how you essentially make sure that that fire doesn't become the next Woolsey Fire. And that you see as we go into nighttime. So again, unfortunately, after the campfires going, the Hill Fire, then the Woolsey Fire, and a few days later, that weather condition set up again, and that SWADI hammer, so Santa Ana Wind Threat Index, it's a single number that they now have down there, and I like a single number, because I'm a seismologist. Everyone knows a MAG2 date's bigger than a MAG25. The SWADI index kind of floats up to 60, hopefully not much more. When it's above 30, the chances of you not having a significant fire in Southern California is virtually none, zip, because the conditions are so right that that's when you have all your big fires. The Lilac Fire was over 60, the highest ever recorded for that SWADI index, and it was put down. This was 45, and here again, there was modeling for over a week before this, the Sky Crane helicopters moved around, and we have a house fire, and it's blowing 40, 50, and when you see that white puffs of smoke, that's the Sky Crane helicopter, it gets there before the first four CAL FIRE truck. This is one of two events during this mountain wave or Santa Ana in San Diego County, and neither one escaped. So again, this is the model that the larger utilities, Edison and PG&E, are basically developing right now, including in your neighborhood. So this is how we're going to go into fire season 2019. Just to bring it a little closer to home, sometimes you have crazy people, and this was an arsonist in 2016 lit over two dozen fires in South Lake Tahoe. The cameras were used to both discover, confirm, and kind of keep situational awareness going, and not a single one escaped. Now, there was an event where a tree broke in like 60, 70 mile an hour winds by Emerald Bay. A tree was about yay big, broke 20 feet up, kind of a rare event, hit a Liberty power line, and caused, relatively speaking, the largest fire in the Lake Tahoe Basin. What's interesting is, and not that this would have been determinative in the outcome, but the weather here modeling isn't what we have in San Diego, and so it was an escalated fire threat, and the fire folks all went home, or at least the extra piece of people, because the rain was supposed to come at midnight, and the rain came at 3:00 AM, the tree broke at 1:15 and caused the Emerald Fire, but guess what? The arsonists decided to use the Emerald Fire to light one over by Meeks Lumber, kind of an Al Tahoe, and you could see it in the foreground, and to our luck, he lit it right there when everybody was watching it on the cameras, and it was knocked down in a high wind event. This is, this system, along with all the weather modeling, is there's no 100% guarantee, there's no silver bullet in fire. What we can say is, we're having a ton of success, but a ton isn't perfection, and we don't want perfection to be the enemy of the good, or the very good. And so what we're trying to do right now is build a very good system. If you go to the Lake Tahoe website right now, you'll see the kind of coverage with all these little circles and different colors, and you'll notice in that lower right-hand or left-hand corner, we have Red Corral. We just put that camera up, working with Volcano Communications and Frank Luchensky. When you go into a new area, there's always heroes, and there's always the first hero. And Frank is the first hero, because he dragged us into this area. I'm happy to come here, because I grew up as a kid over by Twain Heart, until I moved up to Lake Tahoe in sixth grade, so it's fun coming back here. But you need those people. And then we're working with Conifer Communications, and we think they're probably going to be the next hero in the community to get this thing knocked out. Speaking of which, typically, we go into an area, if we have to build our own infrastructure, which we're very capable of doing, it takes years. So in this big push-out, we worked with different wireless internet service providers, like GeoLinks, for example, and you'll see some of their little pin pins, the pink and the brown, some of those cameras are already in. But in your area, the biggest opportunity is with Conifer Communications, and they have 15 towers that looks like they're ready to go, and we can put cameras on them right away. Now, here's why I'm here as well, is to not only get you all geeked up, so people start watching cameras and whatnot, but if you kind of look between the volcanoes, and why does Google Maps have volcanoes and conifer trees, but it happened to work out, there's still parts of your county where it's not going to be easy, and we're going to have to potentially work with CAL FIRE and CAL OES, and you may have your own infrastructure, and we've worked with counties to use your own kind of county OES networks, if you have enough bandwidth on them. So for example, in Napa, Sonoma, some of the cameras are actually backhauled on your towers, or their towers, and their communications, and we can do that all securely, so that's another opportunity. But we got to also figure out how to fill in some of those holes. But the good news is, this area is relatively set up to do a major push this spring to get out some assets, and so we're going to obviously be talking with the folks at Conifer after this presentation, and Sonya, and, but again, we need to fill in some of these holes. And I don't need to tell you, you all lived the Butte Fire, but the Butte Fire wasn't the Butte Fire in the fall. So I drive through parks at Amador County, and it's set up worse than the Paradise area, or quite frankly, parts of the North Bay. Not a good situation. And just like with Paradise, you have the McCollum River Gorge, and so you can set up wind patterns through that. So again, it's not just the cameras, it will be the weather modeling that PG&E will be doing here, work with local fire protection units. It's kind of the whole kind of dance, ballet. And we also want your citizens to know that they can play a part in fire watches, but if something goes south, they can also go to the cameras and understand their situational awareness. So it's, what's been great about being the chief architect of Alert Wildfire, it's really just coming out and meeting people from a number of different states, and we're all in it together, and we all have to work together, and if we do, we can have success like we've had in San Diego County and Lake Tahoe. And again, thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
The pendulum is swinging. And you go back to the time when we had American Camp, Blue Mountain, Mount Elizabeth, you go down to Mount Bullion, those were all towers.
Yes.
And they were manned 24/7 during fire season. And then when people got cell phones, they decided, maybe we could do it a little different, and we started to shut them down. Is Blue Mountain going to be one of those spots that's considered? I'm looking at it visually, from how key that spot is in the total picture, just like Mount Elizabeth is a key.
As all of the spots that are on there, which means, hey, we have a path forward, Blue Mountain is definitely a critical place. And we've talked to, I'm sorry, but I have a bazillion names, but the, is it Sierra, the lumber companies?
SPI.
Yeah. So we've talked to them, and then I believe CAL FIRE, or is it CAL OES, running at CAL FIRE, they have some assets up there, and we're going to actually try to work with Conifer Communications to see if we can get some of their assets up there. Because one of the things we want to highlight is, I can sit there and put something on a tower, right, and bring it back, but if it just takes one other tower to knock down Blue Mountain, or a series of towers, then I don't have a lot of resiliency. So one of the things that we really try to do and go in, and whether it's, we're building ourselves, or we're working with a WISP, Wireless Internet Service Provider, is to try to, I don't mean it's coy, but I do in a way, is how do we defeat the bureaucracy of government, right? How do we make sure that we have enough overlapping communication paths out, that we can take a hit and lose Mount Elizabeth, and not have the whole thing go rogue? Because we need to. And we always tell people is, I can probably pick a million people in the United States of America to put a camera up on a stick, and it will work on these days. Will it work when things are being burned out? Is there enough redundancy? Does your website stay up? I can load something onto a website tomorrow. These days, you got to put it on Amazon, or something to quibble on, to make sure, you can't say, oh, well, there was too many people during the Woolsey Fire, and you would have had all this imagery, but I'm sorry, our website, but that's not acceptable. So again, we really harp on all of us working together, but to get that infrastructure to get the resiliency. And so we will be working with them, and if they need any help, we'll be there for them to try to get that resiliency built into the system, because it has to work on a bad day.
And Dr., one of the things that really hits home is triangulation, and being able to really pinpoint a location through triangulation, and not send resources into an area that we don't need to send them. Lightning strikes. How good is your system in detecting those? Because a lot of times, we would be going out and monitoring locations, knowing those are high potential areas, especially in the Stanislaw Forest, through the night, because if you can't see it on your camera in a night shot, you won't know it exists until it gets into a stage where it's...
So a couple things. A good thing about our cameras, they're near infrared, so at night, we shift in the near-infrared spectrum and finding fires. If one tree catches on fire, it looks like a Roman candle from 20 miles. So the nighttime is actually an easier discovery time, an easier time to understand your situational awareness, which was the unfortunate part with the North Bay fires, is because they didn't have cameras with those capabilities, or cameras at all, they just, Stephanie and I have been there, if you look at the Redcom 911 map, it looks like Porcupine. You think, oh, there'd be like seven areas for all the fire. So being able to have that triangulation, to have it work at night, is great. We bring in data from, it's not our data, but from a nationwide lightning network, so you'll see a heat map on the map all the time, if you check the box, but obviously during the summer, or some freak, like, you know, lightning, snowstorms, but you'll see like little bullseyes and stuff, so in your area, it would be the folks just across the street, but let's say for the last five years, it's people over at Camino, working on the El Bravo Amador Forest, they'd be steering it around these strings, and you pick them off, and they go and knock them down. And again, not many lightning strikes become fires, but that's okay, because you just kind of point them to where, you know, you'll see areas where they're all kind of hammering in one geographic location, and just put them in there, and the way you go, and hope for the best, and if it starts, you got an early jump.
Thank you, Chair.
I want to thank Conifer Communications for being proactive, and for you developing such a great system that could, you know, help us. You know, those first minutes are critical. I do have one question, though. Let's say PG&E, you know, we have a high-risk fire, and they shut down the power. Is there redundancy built into the system, generators, battery, backups? Is there redundancy built into the system, generators, battery backups for those cell towers, so that we can maintain that watch while these are going?
Yeah. So one of the things we build towards, because when you put the first camera in, you have no redundancy, because you need another unit. But we build towards is a couple of things. More than one link out.
Mm-hmm.
And the second thing is to make sure if there's not a backup generator, that we put a bank of batteries. And we haven't talked about this, we'll be talking a little bit, but I'm assuming that the other stuff has that level of redundancy. And if not, we have the money to make things more redundant. So in general, yeah, so we, it doesn't mean that you can't have stuff go down. And we put in some sense more cameras than we need, just because an integrated circuit chip blows out on a camera or on a router or something, as we all struggle with all the time. But we want to build that redundancy in there, because the thing is, if you don't, then you're really going to get hammered on that bad day. But again, before we went to the cloud, we'd have a fire, for example, in the Reno area, Tahoe area, and our site would just go down, because we'd have 10, 20,000 people hit it right away. So we all of a sudden realized, we better build in this thing on the, because if I have a Bel Air fire now...
Right.
Right?
How many million?
Yeah, it's just going to, but that's okay. That's why we're here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Supervisor Kelly?
Could I answer a question on, or answer Ben's question? On our entire network, every site has a double redundancy feed at minimum, if not triple, within four hops to a fiber line, and those are also more than one fiber line. We have battery on all of our sites, whether they're, and quite a few are off-grid. So there are solar with battery and then propane backup as well. The only time we've turned off a site that is redundant in that way is when we've been asked to do so by CAL FIRE. Mount Bullion was turned off, even our backup systems were turned off remotely at their request, because they wanted no option of a spark when there was flames that close.
Thank you very much. That's great.
I'm not surprised.
Supervisor Kelly?
Dr. Ken, I have several questions. How are the locations determined?
So we do it two different ways. One way we can, and the most accurate is, we take two cameras, and we point them, and then, just like they did in the fire lookout towers, except now you just right-click the intersection of the two cameras, and they're like, they're azimuth, like little lasers coming out of them. And so that's a real quick way of getting a landline. We also have another way that's a little less accurate. If we only have one camera, and we don't have two to cross, then you can kind of just hopefully pick the bottom of the smoke plume and not the top, and you'll get a location that way as well.
What I meant is, should we put a camera on campus here? Should we put one in Murphy? Should we put one in Bear Valley? I mean, strategically, I'm trying to understand how you determine the locations.
Well, one of the great things, again, to get back to Supervisor Mills' point, we all kind of did the low-tech version of this. And we, as in other folks than me, put out lookout towers about every 17 miles on a grid. And that was kind of seen as the optimal way of essentially having the best line of sight, being able to cross, you know, locate them with binoculars, put in the azimuth and cross them. Okay? Well, now, here's the problem. The fire conditions have gotten a lot worse, and here's a couple of things. A person on a lookout tower, which I'm not opposed to at all, we need all the eyes on it, but he or she can move the cameras, right? But they also don't have time lapse, they don't have near-infrared vision at night, so that's a challenge. Right? The other thing that kind of sold it for me, because we go up there and talk to somebody's lookout people, if you look at their little chairs, they have ceramic feet on them. So when they're getting hit by lightning, they're supposed to get on the little stool and not get electrocuted. So I'm thinking like, okay, that's their problem. They really want to be up there. But again, we build in Wi-Fi to, like, leak springs. So if their lookout that's there sometimes, they can take, he or she can take their laptop and actually control the cameras from the lookout. And that's not a bad thing.
So we install the systems. I mean, I think we need every tool available. And it's not monitored yet. I understood PG&E has like a fire center, and they're monitoring the cameras that they've installed. So could they, or why would they not be monitoring the ones, others within their service districts?
Yeah. So these cameras will be available to not only the world, but to be moved at your ECC across the street. The folks at, in San Francisco Market Street will be able to do that. But here's the interesting thing. In 2017, we worked with a Polish company that had machine vision to locate smoke. And the idea was, we're going to go in there and basically beat the 911 call. And what we found after a year is, notwithstanding a lot of false alarms, even taking that in consideration, we did not beat the 911 call once. That doesn't mean we won't in the future. But the point being is, the cellphone is so ubiquitous in society today. The problem isn't intel. The problem is sifting through bad intel versus good intel. And the cameras allow you to do that right away. So we haven't given up on the auto-detect. But having said that, it's usually a 911 call that comes in. That's either spot-on, that's not a real fire, or is it located in a wrong space. And we don't have 10, 15, 20, 30 minutes on some days to sift through that problem. It's easier to be able to locate it within a minute. And the other thing we can do, and what goes on, is we can also initiate a burn model based on that location, and within a minute, tell you whether or not, or where the three and six-hour burn radii will go. It's not perfect, but it's pretty good. And so that's something we're working on this summer as well. And the software that the folks at PG&E also run has that ability. So it's not only like, here's the fire, and then they dispatch out of San Andreas with whatever they think is appropriate now that they can see it, but to also get that three- and six-hour burn radii going, to know, is it really bad? Because if you did that during the Tubbs fire, you had shown it hitting 101 at six hours, it took five. The previous fire in the 60s took almost three days to get there. So in their mind, they didn't think that you could go from Calistoga to Santa Rosa in five hours, but actually, the burn models showed that that was more or less what was going to happen. So there's a lot of high-tech stuff that I didn't talk about today that's kind of going into this ballet to knock these fires down early and to provide situational awareness for everyone.
So PG&E's put up cameras.
There are cameras.
I understand they're your cameras. And then Conifer puts some up, and I'm not sure, I'm not real clear how that happens. And that I understand if we have a camera on county property, then the county pays a fee?
No. So here's...
No. I meant, I'm not clear on...
Okay, so I'll go through this, this little dance here on the money side of things. So UC San Diego and University of Nevada Reno have grants from the three major utilities. And what that allows us to do, in the case of Conifer, is we get to reimburse them for their tower climbers who put the camera up there. Reimburse them at their going rate for the backhaul or the bandwidth that we use, and then reimburse them for maintenance of the system. So in a sense, we are transferring money from, in this case, PG&E, through UC San Diego to Conifer, but we get access to their towers. And so what that makes happen is that they're not having to donate their time to do that. Now, on the county level, what we've worked out so far, but every county can be different, is that we pay Sonoma County so much money to put a camera up on their tower, they provide their backhaul for free, and then we give them an annual service maintenance if we have to go up and fix things. So, and then PG&E reimbursed the Alert Wildfire team money to keep this stuff up on the website, and pay our Amazon bills, and develop all the cool tools to keep this thing moving forward. So in a sense, if the county ever has to provide something, if we were on one of your towers, and you would provide tower space, power, and backhaul to us, and that's the most that the county would ever be in. But with the Conifer, what's going to happen is, if you're at the ECC over here across the street, you know, Chris Sarah, she doesn't really care whether PG&E paid, or if it's on a Conifer tower, or if it's a bunch of knucklehead seismologists that do it. She just needs it to work. So all that is stuff that keeps me up at night, but to the firefighters and first responders, everything's seamless, because there are Forest Service-paid cameras in this area, there are cameras paid through NGOs, through PG&E. You might find people wanting to put their own cameras up, which we're open to. But to the firefighters and first responders, and really to the public, no one needs to know how the money's moving around. That would be a bad system.
No, I mean, that I understand, but I care if there's a cost to the county. Not that I'd say no, I just want to understand what that cost would be. I had asked some questions prior, and I was told we ran an A1 or AL machine vision, I don't know what that means, and never beat 911. That's what you were saying, you saw it on the camera.
Yeah.
Oh, the calls came in to 911 prior to the cameras being called.
Yeah. So what happened after the San Bruno gas pipeline fire, PG&E put out $2 million for fire cameras. And a company called Envirovision put cameras, I know, in Amador, I don't know if they ever got working here in Calaveras. And what they, I could speak an hour, I'll speak half a minute. The biggest problem they had is, they went out and promised everybody that the AI would detect all the fires. And that's not true. And the sad thing is, that's not even the real big problem, but they had old Hellco cameras, analog stuff. And so what's fun for us is, as we go, and there's not a lot of those cameras left in California, but when we swap them out, and everybody gets to see the clarity and how they can move it on their cellphone, because that other system was only available in the ECC to one person on one machine. And so the system we've developed is, I was in Switzerland and moved a camera in Nevada this last October, because I got a call, and I went in, I'm like, hey, this is kind of cool, I'm in the Alps. And moved it right away for the folks, because they asked me. So again, that fire camera version 1.0 kind of flopped big time. But we're a different group of people, and we made a distributed digital system, and we are still working on AI, but we're not going to splash it on you till it works. But it works 95% of the time, so that's better than...
Okay. So are you saying that we, the county or whomever, has to come up with the volunteers to have a, to watch the cameras? I meant, I wasn't...
So they'll be watched from a whole bunch of number of places. But in the all-in, if you were smart, I would have like a fire watch volunteer organization on red flag days. It's not necessary, but again, if you just sit there and watch the cameras, you can kind of just like, you just might, right? The more people you can get on the problem, the better. And that's all we're saying.
So how, I want to get back to picking locations. And it sounds like you have one somewhere, West Point area, that you mentioned earlier. So how, how do I get them up the Ebbets Pass corridor where we've had two fires that I've been evacuated from?
Yeah. So that's a great point. One of the cameras that just went up at the very end of the season, Melissa Corey of Mike Kirkwood sees nicely into that area, but it's not the end camera, it's just the first one. So what we need to do, working together, is, obviously, we have a heck of a head start with the Conifer Communications. And then, the first smart thing to do is figure out where all the old lookouts were, and see if we can get on those, like Blue Mountain. And then, at the end of the day, probably not this year, but as we go into years two and three, is we're going to have to probably build some stuff, or build some stuff with Conifer. And so the problem is, I can have a perfect map, and if I can't get land access, I'll pick a good peak instead of a perfect peak if I can never get up. But we're hoping with some of your help, that maybe peak becomes an absolute peak, because you say, we really support getting up on Blue Mountain or wherever. And so it's just pretty much kind of, it just is organic. We know where the lookouts are, we know where the high points that give us a good field of view. It's really now, how do we get on top of them if there's no assets? And it ends up being kind of more of a political thing. I mean, I spent most of my time trying to work with different government agencies and private sector to get on top of mountain tops.
Oh, the person who doesn't like government thing? That's all right.
I didn't say government, I said just defeat.
No.
No, but here's the...
How do we defeat the government, I think was the statement.
Oh, how do we defeat it?
I mean, let's be honest. The reality of it is, and there was a camera location in Sonoma County, in Open Space District, and they wrote a law that if you looked at, you went, they're actually trying to protect that Open Space District. And then we needed to put a camera on top of there, and they wanted it, and they realized they wrote their own regs to make that not happen. And it took four months to unwrit that. And in the end, nobody had foreseen, writing that 20 years ago, what that really meant. And so, in the end of the day, we have to find the shortest path to get on top of mountains, and sometimes you have to go through that four-month situation. But we do have to kind of figure out how to get around things and to make, because we don't have three, five, eight years to get everything out, we have to get out now.
So I guess one more question, I'm not sure which one of you. So if we're looking before fire season in Calaveras County, what is it that you're looking for, and what is the, how many, and what is the timeframe?
What do you need from us?
What do you need?
So, looks like we have a great head start in the kind of Calaveras-Tualleye footprint with Conifer Communications. The next step is, how do we get on some of these potential other towers? And they might be state assets, they may be your own assets. That's what I need your help. And I'm sure, talking to Sonia after this, we'll have a better understanding of that. It may be that we need to work with Conifer to build out other links, and we can provide funding for that, but between the two of us, we may still need your help in getting access. So it's less of a money issue right now than an access issue. And that's really the big ask here. But if you have some towers that we can use, then that's great, and we'll put them into the mix and figure out how to make it happen. But it's almost, it's kind of ridiculous, but right now, it's a land use issue.
What the good doctor is actually saying is, he would like access to the towers that the Sheriff Department has up Highway 4. Those are the assets that the county does have control over, that they could possibly put towers on and pay rent on. As you'll see, Highway 4, with our coverage right now, is not covered.
I know.
We've been in the county since April, and I'm working my hardest. My job every day is to increase internet in the county. And so I want all the customers up Highway 4 to be my customers. And so my goal every day is to put those towers, and I'm working hard to do that.
So most of the towers in the corridor are AT&amp;T towers?
Correct.
They're not county towers?
Okay.
So are you working with AT&amp;T? I mean, there's not a whole lot of towers, and there's not a whole lot of internet.
You're correct.
So, I mean, there's one in Bear Valley and a couple of them, and there are many. So can, do you connect, do you put them on AT&amp;T towers? Would you put them on Comcast towers?
So far, we have not gone into the cellphone tower. That's not a very quick process. The first one that will go up, that's scheduled, is at Edgewood Golf Course. It's a big 160-foot monopile, and we're using that as an example of how we could work together. Right? The other thing to be a little bit worrisome is, the cellular companies are there to produce bandwidth and not reliability. So that's changing after the North Bay fires. But at that time, some of these towers could only stand 12 hours in a crack. So if a fire's on in 12 hours, there might be a problem. That's actually getting better through time. But we're all in. If you can get us on an AT&amp;T tower, or we can work together to get us onto a county sheriff tower, we're all in.
Can you go on a transmission tower?
No. I, we, I'll just use my Edison case. We were able to successfully on San Diego Peak with that V-Lab, put cameras on one Edison tower. And what we all realized, including Edison, was, this was very easy to do. And it just ground... And it just ground, because of their own regulations, it ground their company into the ground, literally. It took six months to do one tower. Using the private sector, we put one plus 100 more in two and a half months. And so they were like, thank God we decided not to put it on our own infrastructure. So, again, from my standpoint, it's all about getting things out quickly, and what Conifer has is perfectly suitable where they have it. The question is, how do we fill in the holes? And again, whether it's county, whether we work with Conifer to build out their assets, there's about 10 different ways to go, but some of those pathways need your, will need your support, as I learn more about your county and your own infrastructure.
Sonia, do you have anything else?
I just wanted to say that as our company continues to grow and increase coverage up Highway 4, and some of those major peaks that we've been talking about, each tower that we bring forward to the planning department and building department will have already been evaluated for cameras. So our continued growth in the county will help increase the coverage as we go forward for these fire cameras.
Okay, well, I think we all agree, fire is important, and we want to deal with it. So, other public comment?
David Harris with Conifer. To answer your question, supervisor, more directly, monopoles are man lift towers. We work off of lattice towers. We got a problem, a pick 'em up truck, we're out there, we're up there, we take care of it, gone. If you're going to get a lift truck, you're going to have to get a Class 8 truck, bringing the piece of equipment out of the valley, you're looking at a $1,000 per day cost. So, it's two different business models, cellular or WISP. And if you're going to, as Tualamie County has done a lot, look at monopoles almost exclusively with, you know, the fake tree effect, you're limited yourself. And that's part of your problem up 4. And we're working on several locations up there as we speak, that we're not going to divulge in this public forum.
You mean, in addition to the towers that are there, that are mostly communication towers?
And I would agree, because occasionally, we'll have to put an asset on something that needs a bucket truck. Guess what? There's snow, it ain't going up there. Now, it might not be fire season, but as winter sits and breaks a lot of things, then we run around in spring fixing things that take more time, and more effort, more money, when we could be putting new cameras out, and it's only then it all catches up.
Okay, I want to try to move this along. Sucrez Mills, you have another question?
Just very quickly, the one area that really comes to mind is where the C in Cedar Ridge is up to the S in Strawberry, it's the middle fork of the Stanislaw. And you go west of that towards Calaveras County, the Highway 4 area, or north on that map, right in there. That has not burned in the last 100 years. If there's fire potential, that's primarily where it's going to be. I know that when you stand on Darby Knob, up there by Forest Meadows, you can look right up that canyon. Hopefully, there will be some good coverage maps developed to really identify more of the deeper channels of these ravines, to get a quicker look at them, not wait for the smoke in the sky to tell you what's happening.
Our quarry, so here's one that's kind of on the other side of the, closest to us of the McCollin River Board. On the other side, about right up here, is Melissa Corey Peak by Kirkwood, and we can actually see into the ski resort at Bear Valley. So that's a way that we can potentially put back all, if we can't get it any other way. I still need to get permission on some tower up there. So, but I would totally agree with you that, I just drive around California, and just like, we are a combination of things, but what has happened the last couple of years is definitely a sign of the future, and we have to do everything we can to reduce it. And there's no doubt that this area has its own set of issues, as do the foothills.
So when you identify these needs, you're going to come back to us and look for some kind of direction from our board?
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds like going through the planning department process.
Yeah. And again, we always laugh that, so if we have to put assets on your towers, ultimately, let's just say we have to get there, and then there'll be a MOU between UC San Diego and the counties, Lake County and Mendocino took two and three days to do it. Our record so far is Sonoma, four months. That actually makes a difference. You know, like, you get slayed four months, and those cameras didn't get put up for the last fire season, okay, so we lucked out. But again, to the degree that you can make yourself look more like Lake and less like Sonoma, if we get to that point, that'd be great, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to try to move this along, but I just have one question for myself. How much money did the State of California put into this, in this last budget? Did I see, there was a line item on there, wasn't there?
So CAL FIRE has put in a line item of $5.2 million for 100 cameras. Those will likely mostly go to service areas outside the main three. If you look at the amount of money being committed by the major utilities, already it's in the tens of millions of dollars.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item? Al?
I'll be brief, considering the time. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I didn't miss the first part. Are these cameras capable of infrared? In other words, heat sensing? Or do they depend on human eyes being, looking at it all the time?
They are near infrared cameras.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, our tradition is, we'll take all the public comment, and you can rebuttal as you go through.
Okay, all right, next one. Is it possible to get satellite pictures that are infrared? In other words, as soon as a fire occurs somewhere, it's picked up by the satellite, and you have instant, you can have instant response? Next question. If early suppression were successful, what would be the cost savings for California? And then the last question is, what would be the cost of more supertankers? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Say no, we'll close public comment, if you give a brief rebuttal.
Maybe we can go one for one, is it okay if you-
You could actually, if you guys want to talk afterwards.
No, no, I'm just saying, just remind me of the four questions. First question, are they infrared?
Yeah, I can remind you.
They are near infrared?
Yeah. Your cameras are infrared?
Near infrared.
Near infrared?
Near infrared.
Okay.
So, a thermal camera, which is great, other than they're really expensive, typically lower resolution, we are using, testing the thermal cameras, and to the degree I was excited, I started using, I realized that the near infrared are a lot better, but we use near infrared. What was the second question?
Does it require human eyes to be on it all the time?
So presently, right now, it's a 911 verification tool. We are working with Boris Berkin Labs on machine vision and AI, and so we're doing that, but the false alarm rate is too high.
Excuse me, we really got to get going on with this meeting, we've really expired over an hour on this. Unless there's, is that okay? Maybe you guys could update outside, or do you want to just sort of summarize?
If this would be important to the Board of Supervisors, you might want to get the answers.
I would say a lot of cost-saving spaces, and this happens a lot, nail to Rato, during a burn index 52 or higher day, which is at the end of the world day, every time they de-escalate a response, it's $90,000 saved. If you count all those up, they pay for the cameras, that doesn't include the fire you put down, and you don't know whether it would have been a big fire. And the last thing is, VLAPs and everything like that, it's big money. So, at the end of the day, if you can keep the things out of the air except for the initial attack, you've saved millions of dollars.
Thank you very much, Professor, appreciate it. Thank you. Al, we'll get those rest of those questions. Thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Item 22 is from Public Works, to adopt a resolution incorporating fiscal year 2019-20 projects into the list of projects funded by SB 1, the Road Repair Accountability Act.
Mr. Pack?
Good morning. Chair Germaine and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack, I'm your Director of Public Works. Hopefully, this should be fairly brief. Today before you is asking you to adopt a resolution incorporating fiscal year 1920 projects into the list of projects funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. So-
Okay, so report of closed session, item number one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957 dot six, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association, there was no reportable action taken. Item two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957 dot six, county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Unit, there was no reportable action taken. Item four.
Item number four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine D two, there was no reportable action taken. Item five, pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine D one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Howard Todd Barr, V. County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV42976, there was no reportable action taken. Item seven, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957B one, title county administrative officer, on a motion by Supervisor Stopper and a second by Supervisor Toffinelli, the board voted unanimously to direct staff to extend an offer of appointment to a successful candidate. If accepted and after completion of a background check, the name will be released and staff will bring forward a contract and resolution memorializing the appointment.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four is from the administrative office to create a facilities ad hoc committee to assist in facilitating project delivery and prioritization of certain facility infrastructure public projects approved by the board on April tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bonnie Rich administration. This item is coming to the board at the direction of the board. We are asking for the board to appoint two members to serve on a ad hoc committee that will assist the facilities division in prioritizing and project delivery for several projects that the board has asked us to take action on last year.
Yeah, since I've been on the board very short term, I've been listening to your comments, to comments of my colleagues on the board and projects. And, I mean, I think this is a good idea and for me, I've given it some thought. Of course, I thought I would be an excellent candidate, haven't changed my mind on that. But, and I went through, you know, some different permutations, like getting a former board member and a new board member, but for me, these issues have been going on for the last three or four years, as I understand. And so, having not to invent the wheel, I would recommend that we pick the chair as one of the board members and Mr. Toffinelli is the other one. And the reason I pick Gary is one, Gary's familiar with construction, sort of, and he and I work, sort of. Could you Watergate that last comment? And I worked with Jerry, Jerry, I don't know who Jerry is, I worked with Gary on the jail project and I just think he brings a long-term perspective to it and Jack sort of brings a new perspective and he's probably been the most vocal on these issues, so let him put his energy where his concerns are. So to make a long story short, colleagues, I recommend Supervisor Garamendi and Supervisor Toffinelli be on the ad hoc committee.
Is that a move?
Any other further discussion Supervisor Stopper?
I could support those recommendations if it was to be a motion.
That's a motion.
Yeah, I was not intending to be on this committee, although you're correct, Maria, I have been popping off a lot about it, so I guess there's a price to pay for that.
Yes.
You want to complain, you got to try to fix it. So I wasn't anticipating that, but what's the rest of the thoughts around the table? I'll serve as ask.
Do you feel you have the time to adequately address the issues?
It just depends on how deep this thing, these problems go. Certainly, we can, I hope so.
If not.
That is a challenge.
If not, then maybe it's a case of reformulating the ad hoc committee at a future point.
I think so. I'm happy to serve on it and help and work with Supervisor Toffinelli, he'll sort of be the pointy part of the spear.
Sure, I'll be happy to sit on this committee and use some of my experience that I have a little bit in construction. Just a taste, so I would accept it.
And Bonnie, if there's any problems with these two members, you just come back to the board.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
No, we have a public comment.
Public comment. Any public comment?
Yeah.
Is it going to be successful?
Can there be an all?
Any public comment?
You come to the microphone, please, if you're going to say.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion, we have a second.
Chair, I just wanted to remind the board, it is in the staff report, but with ad hoc committees, there has to be, it has to be limited in duration. It is being proposed that this committee be dissolved at the end of the fiscal year nineteen twenty, or once all the projects that are contemplated or completed, whichever occur first. So I just wanted to.
Fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
So that's June?
Mm-hmm, nineteen twenty, so it would be June of two thousand and twenty.
Next year.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that that was included in the discussion, that that would be the duration of this ad hoc committee.
I will confirm that second if her motion still stands.
Supervisor Mills, do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, no.
All right, so I have a motion by Supervisor Galloway and a second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-five is from the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So we have before you today a handful of applications and possible appointments. I'll read them all off. If there's any that you would like to act on separately, please note that and we can do that. Otherwise, it is customary that we act on them in one motion and second. So the first is for county service area road advisory committee one, Rancho Calaveras, we have one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen for member one, and one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, member two. We have three applications, one from John Rain, who is an incumbent, one from Gordon Walker, and one from Mark Whitehead. Next, we have the law library board of trustees, one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty nineteen, attorney two or general public member. We have one application from Michael Hatfield. The next is for the solid waste task force, one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, solid waste industry representative. We have an application from Mike Zion, who is an incumbent, and one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen for a city of angels representative. We have an application from Joseph Olivera. And lastly, we have one for the West Point Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one for member three, which is an application from Robert Stanford.
Supervisor Stopper?
I would like to remove the CSA one for Rancho Calaveras to be considered for now. I want to go over the applications and there's some possible issues with some members that are, have not resigned from there that I would like to vet.
Okay. Other comments on it?
I just have a question, why are we approving the representative from the city of angels versus the city of angels can pick whoever they want?
They did pick whoever they wanted. He filled out an application, as is our process, just so that it comes to you and it's part of the usual process for making the appointment.
Right.
And then notifying them.
But, I mean, what if we didn't want him?
Then you would have the ability to say that you didn't want him.
I guess my issue is, is if the city picks whomever, we just accept it without approving it, that's all.
So I think it would be a matter of if there was some reason that the county or the supervisors had knowledge of a reason why someone shouldn't just automatically be appointed, this is that opportunity. Okay, I'm always, I'm always happy to answer questions before the meeting as well, if you have questions about applications.
Supervisor Mills?
I have no issue. I have no issue with Mr. Oliver at all, so.
Supervisor Mills, do you have a question?
No.
All right, so public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion that may contain CSA one being pulled out?
Yeah, I would move that we approve what's before us, with the exception of pulling out CSA district one, that the, CSA number one, that the district five supervisor wishes to remove.
Very well, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. And clerk, do you understand the motion?
I do.
Therefore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
If we could have just a minute for Mr. Pack to set up his laptop?
I'll just take a second.
I'm going to try and do that while you.
While I read?
Introduce the.
I can do that.
That would be pretty fast.
Okay, item twenty-six is from Public Works, to accept a presentation on the Butte Fire Road Restoration Plan.
No, it's, no, it's fine, it's just.
Can you project a warm-up?
There we go, it's coming up.
I will explain to you.
I am impressed.
Good afternoon, Chair Garamendi and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack, I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation, and I'm here today to introduce you to the Butte Fire Road Restoration Plan. So this is a workshop format today, so we're not asking you to take any action or, or nothing that comes out of this today will be definitive action. However, we have presented a, prepared a draft plan for your consideration, asking for you to provide feedback and ultimately, if directed by the board, for us to move forward with a finalized plan for consideration at a later date. So the history of the Butte Fire, I won't go into all these details, but the highlight is that after the settlement with PG&E, there remains about twenty point two million dollars for use by Calaveras County. At the meeting last week, there were a lot of worthwhile causes and opportunities to utilize that funding. Road improvements were identified as one of those potential funding sources and was a sizable percentage of that. So this is an appropriate potential next step to bring some of those discussions and ideas to you for further vetting. So the impetus of this plan began with cost estimate work. So at the January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen board workshop meeting, the board did provide direction to have a discussion or a study session on PG&E settlement. That did occur on March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, last Tuesday. As part of that process and preparation of that, Public Works was asked to develop cost estimates for the repair of roads within the Butte Fire area and roads, not necessarily within the SCAR, but that were affected nonetheless. The estimates of that work were estimated at fourteen point six million and that number was reported out to the board last week. So this is one opportunity, I've heard a couple of comments from the public about how this plan came to its genesis. And in order to quell any confusion or questions, this was an effort done by Public Works. And the effort was done because we knew with a number of fourteen point six, there was going to be considerable scrutiny, and rightfully so, on a number of that size and how that would be spent. In particular, the days of writing a check and saying, fix it and come back in three years are long gone. And so we knew as part of the number, we had to provide detailed justification on how we got to this number and how we would get to that number over time. So the plan is a response to that request for cost estimate information, it's an anticipation that the board and the public would want to vet this pretty thoroughly. It justifies and responds to the need for transparency and accountability through this process. It is, it justifies the funding request in detail. It's also an opportunity to educate the board and the public on what went through the number, how that 14.6 million was identified. And then the final thing we need to do is to establish reasonable and realistic expectations. Because if you hear a number like that, what people's expectations with that could range a wide gamut, and we want to make sure that the public and the board in particular is familiar with what we're proposing as part of that funding. So, there are a number of roads that are included. The screen has those up right now. They are listed in priorities, this is a preliminary list, but these were the roads that were preliminarily identified. Some of the key ones, Mountain Ranch Road, Railroad Flat, Whiskey Slide, Jesus Maria, Hober, roads that are within the SCAR area or, in the case of example, Mountain Ranch, one that beat, a lot of emergency traffic went down in order to access the fire and was affected by that traffic during the fire activity. So, this list, for information for the board and the public, this list was not created recently. This was an original list that was created shortly after the Butte Fire, and it was part of a mutual aid agreement. So, when the fire occurred afterwards, we received assistance from the state with engineers. They worked with our staff, both maintenance and engineering staff, to identify all the impacts from the fire. That list was the impetus for us going after federal reimbursement opportunities by both FEMA and FHWA. As I mentioned already, there are some roads outside the burn SCAR, but this list that was provided in the previous slide, there was no previous input from the board or public that I'm aware of. So again, that list, that was instead of recreating the wheel, a list that had already been prepared three years ago. We use that as our initial estimate moving forward. Now, the board has complete and total discretion to add or subtract roads on that list. Again, this is up for your discussion. We had a list of priorities on there, and we'll talk more about this in coming slides, but the idea was that we would start with priority roads based on volumes, based on capacity, based on their functional classification, so roads that are original in nature would receive initial efforts. And then we would move towards potentially more local roads, lower volume roads, as we move forward in the program. So, the damage, as you can expect, was pretty severe and significant. Now, some of these roads weren't in great shape before the fire, but the fire certainly exacerbated some current roads. These are things that you would be aware of, significant potholes that we've been chasing since after, since and after 2015. The paving conditions are in pretty rough shape on a lot of these roads. Drainage is one of the biggest issues, because with the lack of erosion control, the erosion coming down from the hillsides has been filling up drainage ditches, roadside drainage ditches, clogging culverts, causing localized flooding, rotting out culverts that were already probably not in great shape to begin with. So, that's a significant push as part of this plan, is to restore drainage to its original condition, or better than what it was before. Roadside tree vegetation and brush is certainly a concern, not only from fire, but also from a safety perspective. Unpaved road damage, those roads, while sometimes takes a little bit less effort, some of those roads were impacted, need gravel stabilization efforts. Hillside slope stability is another thing that we can look at, especially with the erosion issues, are there localized issues where we need to look at to help provide stability for the hillside? So, we do have a number of recommendations for you today. What these recommendations encompass is a significant effort and a realization that there's a lot of effort and a lot of different facets that need to take place in order to complete this work. I can't snap my fingers and next week the work's done. This is going to take place, what we think ideally, over a three to three and a half year period. It involves a lot of labor, it involves equipment and materials, and it involves significant coordination with our construction community in order to deliver this work. One key thing too, as part of this plan, and you'll see this reflected as one of the recommendations, is we have to make sure that this work doesn't impact our other core services. So, with our existing crews, I can't ignore Arnold or Copperopolis or Valley Springs and pull crews over to this area, because while we might be attending to this issue, we're not serving our community in other areas. So this plan needs to be cognizant and sensitive of that issue. So, there's six recommendations total. Recommendation one is the hiring of seasonal employees. One of the directions we heard loud and clear from the board previously was that to be sensitive, this is one-time expenditures, and to be sensitive of us adding recurring expenditures beyond the lifetime of this project. So, hiring up to eight permanent employees, well, that would be wonderful. After this money is gone, and after these three years, I have now eight employees that I don't have necessarily a great way to pay them on, moving forward. So, the recommendation is seasonal help, primarily over the May-October time period. We would love to hire up to eight seasonal employees specifically dedicated to do work in the fire areas. And one thing I want to highlight is, they would only be paid for work they do in the fire areas. So this isn't, folks, we hire eight people, they spend a week over the fire, and they spend three weeks in Arnold, and we're paying them out of the fire for the Arnold area. Sorry, Supervisor Calaway. But the idea is that they would be funded through, you know, all work done by crews in that area would be reimbursed by that area. If they're not doing work in that area, they would be reimbursed by the road fund. So, the idea is to track, accurately track that, and only utilize the funding that's available for work done in that area. Recommendation two is equipment purchases. Much like I'm with you today on this laptop, talking through this projector, using this projector, these are the tools I need in order to do my job. Our crews need equipment to do their job. Light duty pickup trucks. If we have eight seasonal employees, I need to drive to the job site. So, we need to hot, we need to purchase pickup trucks in order to get them where they need to go. Dump trucks are also, the ability to haul equipment and materials back and forth to the job site. There's some limited heavy equipment needs, backhoes, skid steers, in order to perform the work on-site. The purchase of an asphalt grinder that can grind the asphalt in place and make the repairs. There's some other minor miscellaneous equipment. But one thing I want to highlight here is, this is the equipment we think we need over each of the three years during that, during that entire five or six months that they're working. So, when you look at the cost of renting versus the cost of purchasing, this is the sort of equipment that it makes more sense to purchase, because when you look at the rental prices, you go beyond that, the price to purchase in that timeframe, and then you don't have anything to show for it. Here, we are, our thought is the ability to have equipment for this work and have equipment afterwards, though not necessarily mutually exclusive. So, if we can save money by purchasing this equipment now, use it for the three years in this area, and then have it available for another decade or more, in some cases, a lot longer, there's an opportunity there. So that, I do want to highlight that need, but this is equipment that we think that we can purchase, and it's cheaper to purchase it for the extensive amount of use we're going to put on it over the next three-plus years. Recommendation three is the road prep work. This is the work we need to do to fix the roads, get them ready for some sort of resurfacing or repaving. There's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into that. Paving failures, those are those nasty divots, the alligator cracking, those need to be dug out, those need to be repaired. Cracks have to be sealed, the rutting, that comes when you get heavy vehicles going over roads that aren't designed to carry that traffic. That needs to be repaired. Drainage must be attended to, that's everything from drainage ditches to rotten-out culverts, everything in between. Stabilization efforts for soil, vegetation, debris, dead trees adjacent to the road right away need to be taken care of. Dirt roads have to be graded. As I mentioned, we'll mix seasonal and permanent employees as part of this. One thing I do want to highlight, there's a lot of materials that are part of this effort. Most of our material providers are located locally. So there is opportunities here for a little bit of an economic boost for our local providers by sourcing that equipment, sourcing that materials locally. And for that, that makes sense. Obviously, we're not, we're not spending 40, 50% more to buy locally potentially, but we are looking, because of the cost of trucking, it's cheaper to buy that stuff locally. So there's a benefit to some of our local providers. Construction is recommendation four, that's really the granddaddy of this. That's repaving or resurfacing roads. We do have a few roads that are in pretty decent shape, that they don't necessarily need an overlay or something more significant. We'll look to put the right surface on the right road. There's a couple of different options here, slurry and chip seals. This county hasn't done micro surfaces, they're kind of a fancier slurry. I really like them, they're one of my favorite surfaces. I think you get better longevity and a bang for your buck, but it is in the same family as a slurry seal. Roads in worse shape would receive a little bit more attention, things like overlays. There's other preventative maintenance and improvement techniques we look. And again, that pavement management system we're doing, that would be a great opportunity, because we're looking at these roads as part of that. That data will help give us more direction on what to do for these particular roads, what specific approach that's the most cost-effective. As I mentioned previously, there are a few roads outside of the SCAR that were identified previously, that were affected by fire activity and emergency response efforts. Most, all of these efforts will be contracted out. The county doesn't have the expertise. We could pave roads, but we have to appreciate the fact that there's folks out there that do that for a living. That's the only thing they do, and they do a really good job. And so, we'll be looking to our, to the construction community to provide that service. The last couple of recommendations, these are much smaller in cost, but I still want to identify them. The projects do need some engineering support. Everything from technical studies that need to get done to help the bidding construction process, procurement process, engineering does provide a little bit of support for that. And then, management and inspection services. We need to provide construction needs oversight to ensure the work's done according to the project plans. For smaller jobs, sometimes we'd handle that in-house, but we do have on-call construction management firms that can provide that service if we're, if we're a little backlogged. So again, if this work is a little bit more than what our staff is, we have flexibility through some on-call contracts to right-size ourselves when the work's being done, and then go back to more reasonable staffing levels later on when the work's complete. So, here's the budget. You can see the $14.6 million on the bottom. As you can see under here, this construction one is the granddaddy. Prep work is also a significant portion as part of that. The subtotal is actually $13.3 million. I have included a 10% contingency, that's for minor variances, unexpected repairs, but more importantly, construction costs are going to increase over the next three years. Traditionally, we see MRIs 2.5% to 4% any given year, based on the California Construction Cost Index. This kind of reflects that to a certain extent, that knowing that the work we're doing in 2022 is going to cost a little more than the work we do in 2019 or 2020. So, really quick, I'm going to go through these slides relatively, relatively quickly, if I, if there's something you want more detail. But part of this process is to not tell you how we're going to spend the money, but the timeframe in which we are proposing. So, we can potentially, if the board does give direction, and we ultimately move in a direction relatively quickly, we're in a position to potentially respond to the second, in the second half of the summer of this year. We think if we can get to some of this work this summer, we can potentially be done by fall 2022. As I mentioned, our early efforts will be focused on major collector roads, and we'd also look in other roads geographically. So if we're near two really big roads, and there's a small road right next to there, we're not going to wait for that road, we'll do that there, just because geographically, it makes more sense to do it now than have to re-mobilize two years later into the same geographic area. But, as I mentioned prior, and the board can certainly have different direction, that's our early recommendation. The project timeline, there are a couple of things. One of the reasons why we're presenting this to you today is there's a few things that take a long lead time. The equipment procurement process, right now, we call our Ford dealer last week, it's a 14-week lead time for trucks for F-350s, which is our model we use for our crews. Just for folks who hate Ford, and I called Chevy and Dodge too, they're even longer lead times. So, what this reflects is, SB 1 reflects this, a lot of people are doing work, people are hiring people, people are hiring new equipment, getting new equipment. So, you're seeing the long lead times here. I don't necessarily have the surplus trucks to drive people back and forth, so this would be one of the first actions, if the board directed us that. Advertising for seasonal employees, the later we late wait, a lot, especially for folks looking for jobs in the summer, if we wait until the summer and then start looking for those folks, a lot of those folks already have jobs. So ideally, we look for those folks in the late winter. We're a little late right now, but, you know, in subsequent years, if the board proves that, we would start that process early to have them on hand as early as possible. But, these, these two processes take time. We would begin work on major priority roads, focusing on drainage debris removal, other sort of road prep activity. 2020, if that timeline came to fruition, the last of the road prep for those roads would be done, we would pay those as part of a large capital project. We would then begin the process all over again. So advertise for seasonal employees, begin work on the second phase of roads, focusing on the same things we did for the first year. 2021, very similar, finalize work and pay the second priority roads, begin the process again, and then hit the remaining roads that we have with the available funding for construction in 2022, building those in 2022. Depending on how far we get in 2021, we may or may not need seasonal employees, that would be a call in 2021. And then at the end, if we do have any remaining funds, we would recommend coming back to your board for adoption for potentially reallocation of those funds for whatever you see fit. So, the last couple of slides I have before I open to questions from the board is, I know if I was in your position, if I was coming to this plan, I would have, I would want to have accountability throughout the process. And so, I recognize that, I appreciate that, and in particular, the need to have not just one, but regular report backs, letting you know how things are going. Now fortunately, I think there's a mechanism that can do that really well, and that's the Capital Improvement Program. We did just present this to you this last year. That's the annual process, ideally that comes to the board in December. We think that programming the projects in multi-year segments, they come to you in December before the following subsequent year work begins, is an excellent opportunity for you to see it, for you to provide feedback, for the public to see the plan, and then ultimately, your feedback and input would resolve into a finalized CIP, which would guide the work for the following construction season. And so that would be an iterative process between Public Works and the board. You would see that plan each year, in December of 2019, December 2020, December 2021, plus three times we adopt the plan, plus the operating budget, you've got a minimum of nine opportunities over the next three years to weigh in on this process. So I think using the CIP as a mechanism for board input and feedback is a great tool to use, without having to create a new process or create a new standalone thing that's different or unique. This is building it into a, to a format that's already familiar with the board. The last thing I want to touch on, really, one of the last two things, I promise I'm getting close to being done, is community engagement. We know that this project, if it's approved by the board, is going to have a significant impact on the community, in particular with the construction activity. We need to reach out to the community to let them know what's going on. So, we're proposing a series of workshops in the communities in which this is occurring to talk about the project, to talk about the timeline, solicit feedback, solicit potentially neighborhood captains or groups we can work with to disseminate information back and forth as work's going on. And then there's more traditional notification processes, things like social media, electronic message boards. We can put up large two-post project warning, not warning, project information signs, press releases, local notifications for construction. There's a lot of things we can do to keep the public up to date and informed. The last slide before I summarize is what's not included. And this is part of that setting and establishing realistic expectations or reasonable expectations. There's a few things that are here that the public may think is in here that work, that's not included in this estimate. A couple of things on private property, both tree removal, there's already other efforts to remove trees affected by the Butte Fire. That process has already, for the most part, occurred. Improvements on private roads, again, this looks focused solely on public roads. Construction of new roads and widening existing roads or realigning. We are going to look for opportunities that are kind of low-hanging fruit, that we can maybe do spot widening on curbs, where we can get emergency vehicles past. Other efforts for fire access. And the reason for that is, so I'm an engineer, and I admit that freely, realizing that these sort of projects require significant engineering. When you start talking about the experience required, right-of-way, environmental, things like biological and cultural resource studies, the efforts and the timeframe and the cost that go along with that are so high. And I think I shared an example a few weeks ago. I did a very small road widening project, it was a very similar road, it was a substandard road, we added shoulders to bring it up to standard, did a small overlay, I did this two years ago. That work was after, it was a $1.1 million for one mile of road, and it was another $500,000 to $600,000 in engineering design, right-of-way. It was just a, just, and it took nine years to deliver, because it was, that was a federal process, and maybe that's not the best example, but highlighting the need that this is just, it takes a lot of effort to go beyond. And my goal is to get as much pavement on the road in the areas affected by the SCAR and areas surrounding that as possible. So, essentially, in summary, this is our, this plan is a draft, it's an effort on our behalf to program funding to respond to fires affected by the fire and around the fire area. Hopefully, with its full implementation, we deliver it by the end of 2023. And as I mentioned previously, we would incorporate the plan into a CIP adoption process, so the board has numerous opportunities, as the project's moving forward, to provide input and feedback. And this also involves additional outreach to the public to inform and educate them of the work being. of the work being done. So that's all I have. I appreciate your patience greatly on this. I know it's been a long day. And with that said, I'm available to ask, are any questions you and the public have?
Thank you. This is an informational item only, so questions from board? Supervisor Stoppard, do you want to begin?
I'll pipe.
Supervisor Mills?
Okay, I'll turn on my light. Oh, it's online. Okay. At least I know to turn it on, right?
Sorry. Join line.
Anyway. Thinking about the number of road miles that are involved here, are we going to be reaching out to the other agencies for dig wants?
Yeah, the dig wants, absolutely, and that was not touched on. It's a great topic. So dig wants is something that we are planning to bring to you later this year. This work, the actual paving work, won't occur until, until spring or summer of next year at the earliest. There will be ample opportunity. I will say, there will be a dig wants policy in place before we get there. We've also been through, we've started utility coordination meetings. Those happen about every three months, and so the agencies have been coming along with Public Works to coordinate. And so our efforts would also include reaching out to the various utilities in the area to inform them well ahead of time of our plans in the area. So there's going to be a multitude of efforts so that we can educate our utility partners so they know what's going on, and so they have ample opportunity to schedule and perform maintenance work before we go in and pave.
On the roads that we've done some, new fire repairs already, correct?
Yes, there are some roads on this list, we've done some minor repairs. This does take, this is a preliminary estimate. I saw there was one road in there that I think we've done a little more than just repair. This does take into account that, that those roads haven't been repaved. There were digouts and base value repairs, things like that, but they have not been resurfaced. So there are some localized repairs. There is also, and I think Rebecca Callen has reported this, there's a, some work as part of an FHWA reimbursement. Both Rebecca and I think that that work is likely not to be reimbursed. So we're pursuing, assuming that reimbursement's not coming, although we are aggressively continuing to pursue that reimbursement. If we do get reimbursed, then that's obviously, that helps get us closer, potentially spend less money as part of this settlement amount of dollars. But we likely won't know the answer to that one for many months.
So the goal would be to do these overlays, they'd be what, 20-year overlays, 20-year or better?
Yeah, typical overlay, if you do a two or three-inch overlay, you're expecting a 20-year lifespan. Some of the lesser stuff, like slurry seals, depending on the classification, five to 10-year life. And so based on the condition, but yeah, an overlay could typically last, especially in a rural area, could last 20 years. And part of the process would be, and I'm getting into the weeds a little here, is a lot of these roads are, didn't traditionally have asphalt. They've been years and years of chip seal over chip seal over chip seal. And so they look like paved roads, but they don't necessarily have a traditional road base that you would build a road on. But this is the opportunity by, one thing we do is we dig that up. The zipper is a good opportunity, that tool I talked about. You can actually zip it up, lay it down as a new road base, come over with asphalt, and you have a better road than was there before. And that could be one approach that we use on these roads. Again, taking advantage of the material that's there, using it as new road base, building a new road over the top of it, and then getting a long life out of it. You're right, 20 years is a reasonable timeframe for a lot of these roads for a new overlay.
So if we build the road to a higher level or make it a better road, there's going to be obviously a cost to maintain at that higher level over a period of time, correct?
No, actually, the cost is less because when you take an overlay and you put a brand-new surface, over the next 20 years, our response is pretty light. I mean, occasionally, maybe we have to do some crack sealing or some minor repairs, but when we have roads that are in disrepair and roads that are in pavement conditions that are in failing or worse, the maintenance cost each year to maintain those is far higher than what it would be to maintain a road that's in great shape. And yeah, 25 years from now, yeah, we'll have to fix that road and do maintenance on it. But over the next 20 years, the annual maintenance cost for a new road that's done today versus one that's in poor condition now, the poor condition gets far more cost than a new road.
And I just, it's not in my district, but I think of Murphy Sheep Ranch Road as a good example of a critical infrastructure road that ties north-south in this county and yet is in a state of substantial disrepair. That's just one of those things, I think, that we need to, to look at. So I just want to be sure that the money is going to be well-spent and that it will serve the purpose for a longer term rather than just an immediate need.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why we, Supervisor Mills, why we developed this plan. There needs to be some accountability for the plan. It's also why you don't see me proposing a lot of engineering and improvement because as an engineer, I can appreciate that fixing roads, repairing roads, doing this kind of, you know, not grassroots, but just that, that, that sort of effort, the construction, that gets more pavement and more improvement on the ground long-term than us preparing beautiful 40-sheep plans or spending $150,000 in studies that don't really give the benefit to the public. Now, there's projects that would need that, you know, large bridge projects or things like that, and we need to do those things. But with this, this is really a focused effort to really get as much black pavement, to get as much repair work in there as possible going forward. So I think that plan reflects your, your wish.
I really do appreciate you speaking to the culvert-seditions situation because if you're going to put pavement on the ground and you don't have a good way of moving that stormwater, you're wasting your time in many of these areas because of the terrain. So, you know, we may come back here at some point, and you're going to say, I need to do some major culvert work in these certain areas too as part of this. So that's not, that's an unknown at this point.
That Supervisor Mills, that's actually incorporated into this plan. So we did, when you see the prep work, and I'll go back to the prior slide, so, this slide right here, this 1.9 million in prep work, that includes an expectation that we're going to have a number of culverts that we need to repair as part, or replace as part of this. And while you're digging it up, you know, while you're digging the road, I agree, you know, it's not just the road itself, it's everything below. And if you have a culvert that's in really bad shape, it makes no sense to fix the road. Come back in two years later and replace the culvert, so.
I just didn't see the word culvert in there.
Yeah, and you know, it's not in there, but it's when you start diving into the actual spreadsheet, that's in there.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for your responses.
I've clarified on a lot of this because I look at a lot of these roads and knowing there is, a lot of them are gravel, but you do say, but they're broken up. They do have pavement, and you say overlay, but it starts at one end where it is, it is paved already, and then you say to, it says to gravel. So, so you, how many of these areas are you planning on doing that are gravel that are going to get overlay?
So the roads that you see here, and I am not going to vouch for the 100%, you know, this might not be perfect every little thing, and this was a preliminary effort done three years ago, but most of these roads should be paved. The idea behind this is we're not going to go pave roads that are currently not paved. Now, the board can certainly provide direction to that, and we can certainly approach that. But right now, the plan is to kind of restore to what it was before the fire. Paving a road, well, we certainly could do that, and we could certainly incorporate that into our, to our project. What we had proposed as part of this initial plan was that roads that were not paved already would not stay paved. There are some examples, I mean, we, we maintain dirt and gravel roads all the time. Some of the things, and I think one of the supervisors has said a few times, people complain when their road's dirt, they complain when you're out there building it, and when you pave the road, they complain about the speeds. So I think each road's its unique issue and item. I'm the first one to say I don't claim I'm an expert on all these roads. I think folks on the dais would be better experts than I would on some of these roads. And if there's opportunities and you go, hey, Josh, we're here, here's a road that, you know, there's a mile section that we could really pave and look at. Now, there's costs associated with that, so we'd have to look to reprioritize things, but this is a perfect opportunity to make that adjustment here. And it doesn't necessarily have to be today, or if the board decides to adopt the plan, it could be in the next CIP or the following CIP. As long as there's funding remaining and there's a wish to take some of these roads and make some minor improvements. The only caveat I have to that is when you start, there's a, there's a slippery slope between paving a road and all of a sudden, now we start widening it, now we start redoing the whole drainage, and then now we start talking about impacts that go far and exceed just a simple road project. But totally at your discretion, if the board provides that direction, we could certainly pursue that.
Also, knowing this area, the dig wants policy, 99% of it's not a concern. There's no water out there, there's no gas out there, there's no underground electricity. So that, that's, that's largely unconcerned. I mean, a little bit sheep ranch, a little bit mountain ranch, those would be areas.
You'd be surprised, Haver Road, I believe CBIN went down Haver Road, they've also gone down some other roads, so there's fiber there. But it also sets the expectation that this is going to be our largest paving project, a lot of our paving work in combination with Senate Bill 1. So we talked about that previously. Having a dig wants policy in particular, if you talk about next year's SB1 projects combined with this, we're going to be doing a lot of roadwork next year. And so by having a dig wants policy in advance, hopefully at some point this year, even if it's not necessarily applicable here on most of these roads, having that in the long run, it makes sense.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying, applicable on these roads is what I'm explaining.
Agreed.
That's, that's all I've got for right now.
Supervisor Mills, you have another question?
Oh, my apologies.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of questions. Josh, not only are some of those roads gravel, they're, they're dirt. So I don't know, and I think down priority number three, some of those roads are dirt from one end to the other. After Google-Earth-ing them and looking at them over the course of the last couple of days, I don't know why they ended up on a list to pave when they were dirt from the beginning. Certainly maybe some road improvements to them, but I think we need to distinguish that when, when it comes forward to us. Certainly agreement with the CIP program, that would give us a hands-on coming back to us. But my major concern is the priority one, the second one, where you're calling Mountain Ranch Road from Highway 49 to Esperanza, and you are calling for that to be micro-surface. January 22nd, you promoted, you came before us with a CIP plan, and Mountain Ranch Road is part of a, a program for the jail and the court in order for us to mitigate those projects, and micro-surfacing was not part of it. And your program that you presented to us at that time, it said, "Project description, Mountain Ranch Road improvements include roadway resurfacing, roadway widening, construction of curb, gutter, sidewalk, crosswalk installation, advanced warning devices, undergrounding of overhead utilities, installation of decorative streetlights, and realignment of the Pope Street intersection to form a T-intersection." That's not micro-resurfacing. So, and then you went down and you had the costs, and some of the costs were going to be paid through CMAC, and then I think some of the funds we're already on deposit with from the court system for that project. And I think we have some other money put away for it. So my concern is if we're spending money out of this to micro-surface, we're not doing the project that we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah. So first of all, as a point of clarification, micro-surfacing is a form of resurfacing. So the whole family of slurry, chip seal, micro-surface, fog seal, cape seal, all of these seal efforts, micro-surfacing is one of those, is all in the family of what we call resurfacing. So the description in the Mountain Ranch Road Capital Improvement Project, when it says resurfacing, that includes options that may include, that it may include micro-surface. So that's not necessarily an inconsistency. With that said, I do agree that there is a redundancy between the two that was not intentional. So this could be adjusted, and the plan is, as we've kind of talked offline, the plan is to deliver that project in 2020.
Correct.
And that project will include resurfacing generally from Highway 49 to Government Center Road and then up Government Center Road. So reality, we, when we go back to the revised schedule, and again, why we're here is to get feedback on that, I would say we take back the Mountain Ranch Road, we revise that to reflect the limits of, to reflect the limits of the project for Mountain Ranch on this. So in there, I would say, instead of from Highway 49, I would say from Government Center.
I just wanted that clarified, and we do have additional money in according, to add to what you have programmed into this.
Yeah, and so this money would not be used for that. This was more to identify the limits of roads that were affected.
Well, it says from Highway, it says from Highway 49, Esperanza, so I assume that you were including that in this list that, and I wanted to make that clear. I mean, that's a different set project, maybe from, from Calvarius Road going up to Esperanza, but this project is a separate mitigation project.
And that's true. So we'll, when we do the revised list, we'll take off Highway 49. Now, cost-wise, a micro-surface is pretty small. It's about, I think it's, when you count everything, it's 25 cents a square foot. So you're looking at maybe $20,000 off, maybe $15,000, $20,000 off that 14.6 number. It's not a lot of surfacing, but we'll make sure we drop that 49 off there and readjust it to make sure it better correlates with a capital project that's in the CIP.
Those are the only comment I had right now.
Thank you very much. See no more comments from the board? We will see if there's public comment on this item. Hal?
I guess everybody's not tripping over each other to get up here. It's an excellent, excellent report. Actually, three questions. One of them is what percentage of this work will be contracted out or is anticipated to be contracted out? And what is the percentage of this work to the overall road maintenance budget? And the last one is related to this, but a little bit off-topic. Do we have an update on the bridge on Burns Ferry Road? Thank you.
Are there other public comments? Marty?
Hi. Well, first of all, thank you for the, the dig wants. Been singing that song for a long time, a lot of us have, and so it's nice to know that we're going to finally put it in place. I'm curious to know, you put out the word to everybody, all the different agencies, and say, look, we're going to be working on this road. You got something you want to put in there, better do it now. So what happens if they come back later? We've seen it happen over and over again in San Andreas and other places where we, the, the roads are all dug up and it's kind of a mess and everything, and then they get it all back, and then two weeks later, they're digging it up again for somebody else. So I'm just wondering, every time we fix our roads, and they are wonderful, and then somebody cuts into them, that damages it and makes it, doesn't last nearly as long, right? So what is the incentive for them to get on board now before we do this, these projects? I mean, are they, will they then be fined or something if they come back later and want to do it later? Or are they going to have to really redo the road back to the original quality that you did? And then at some point, I'd really like to talk about, before we do anything with this Pope Street T thing, I'd really like to talk to Gary, if you, if we could make a point to do that. And anyway, thank you. Thank you all. And Chairman Garamendi, thank you for bringing this list of projects for the use of the money. Thank you. No, I mean the overall list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Josh.
Is there other public comment? See none, we'll close public comment. Josh, do you want to have any rebuttal to any of those questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond.
I got most of them written down here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond, and I think I got them written down too. So the first question was regarding the percent of work that would be contracted out, and I brought up this slide because this is an extra response to that. So the construction is the lion's share of the work, it's $9 million. So when you compare that, which is entirely contracted out, that'll be done by professional contractors that are familiar with those processes. Some of these other items will be contracted out, a little bit of the construction management support, and then a little bit of the engineering support. That's not a big number, but when you look at the whole thing, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of 70%. So 70% will be contracted out, and then the remaining will be purchases of equipment or through the hiring of temporary employees. So it's a sizable amount. The second question, the percent of funding, is it relates to the overall budget. I don't have a number for that right now, I could certainly provide that at some point down the road. It is a sizable bump to what our operating budget is annually. So when you look at how the construction and prep work roll in compared to, for example, the thing I can compare it to is Senate Bill 1, and I think I mentioned this previously, we're projecting about $4.3 million in funding available for paving and other infrastructure improvements through the, the highway user tax program. So when you look at this money over a three-year period, it's essentially doubling or even more than that. So I think the thing you're going to see is if, if the board does give us direction or ultimately approve it, you're going to see see significant improvements in our pavement over the next three years between the two programs. The third one, the bridge at the O'Burns Ferry, I'd be happy to talk with Al offline about this. That project's no longer an active project with Calaveras, there is a long history of that. There was actually an article in the paper a few months about it. We're still monitoring it, but I'd be happy to talk with the resident offline at a later time. And then the fourth, unless the board has additional questions. And then the fourth question is the moratorium. That's a great question, and that's a question that each jurisdiction deals with. How I would like to do it as part of a dig wants policy and as part of normal policy is, we educate the utility community well advanced so they know what's going on. There are two different levels of work. Sometimes there's an emergency repair where maybe you have a valve that goes out, and you need to make an emergency repair on the spot. That sort of stuff happens, we want to realize that. There need to be repairs, those need to be done right. What we worry about more is that 1,000-foot trench that goes down the road three weeks after we build. This plan, a dig wants would likely have some sort of moratorium that would prohibit any sort of improvement projects over a minimum period of years. One number I've used in the past is either three years or a pavement condition at a grade of basically B or better that they can't touch that. That's one option. That'll be presented to the board in the future. And then, based on the road conditions, as roads deteriorate and get worse, there needs to be some sort of sliding scale. If a road's in terrible shape, we don't ask the community, the utility community to build that to a brand-new shape. That's an unreasonable cost. But at the same time, if the road's brand-new, it's unreasonable to allow the utility to put a big trench in it, not ask them to repair it to a condition like new. So, the dig wants policy will reflect that. Usually, we don't do penalties, usually it's moratoriums. The other thing we can do too is we can require them to overlay that or resurface it back to a newer, as similar or better condition of what it was prior. So, the dig wants would already have that. We already do that to a certain extent, at least recently, with our utilities, although we do have a prior record of maybe not being the best at actively enforcing that. I'm looking to aggressively change that model. So, I think I answered all the questions.
Thank you very much. Further questions? Supervisor Toffinelli?
Yeah, I have a question. This list, you say $9 million for improvements on paved roads, construction portion of it. Under the equipment, you have, you want to purchase an asphalt zipper and grinder. What is a zipper grinder if we're going to be doing, subbing out the $9 million worth of construction?
It's a good question. So, an asphalt zipper, so the plan is part of the way it's set up now, is our construction crews repair the road to a condition that they're ready to pave. So, that includes dig out. So, when you have a large section, maybe a 10-foot by 8-foot section of pavement that's failed, and it's, you know that looks like alligator skin, it's all, it's kind of cracked up and kind of in rough shape. So, a zipper is an efficient way to come in and grind the pavement to a condition, or grind it, make it to a new usable road base, and then we come over the top and patch it. And so, we'll patch it with a new, with new pavement. Now, it looks like a quilt, but structurally, it's in good shape. And then the contractors come in the following year, the following months, do the necessary resurfacing to make it a brand-new surface. But that's why the zipper's in there. The zipper is also, it's a multi-use tool, but for this case, because we have so many potholes, a series of potholes, so many failures, we're proposing that our crews are going to do the prep work, fix those failures, and then the contractors are going to come in at a later point and do that. We think there's more, I think there's more value in having crews and seasonal employees than contract that worked out. That's my opinion.
And then, the other question I have is, since this is discretionary money that we can use, and there's no federal dollars or state dollars, then we can go local on all of this. That might correct, assuming that if we put out for bid for resurfacing, we can go totally all local on everything that we possibly can here.
Yeah, that would be at the board's discretion. I just bid a project that was a locally-funded project. We did have, I think it was on previous jobs, I think the jail job had either a 3% or a 5% local preference match. And so, we could certainly incorporate that into the plan specs and estimates. If the board had discretion to adjust that number a little bit, we could certainly come to you to reflect that. But like I said, I think with some of the BLM tree mortality, we did include a local bidder's preference. It was either 3% or 5% off the top of my head. It was a small, it wasn't, you know, we didn't exclusively limit that. I think that would, we run this issues, especially with paving, we may have one contractor that could do it. But we certainly could do that, and especially with local, I see many.
Mr. Chairman, I was, and Josh just mentioned that there is a local preference that's available, and I'm very certain it's 3%. In addition, obviously, we'd have to have to follow the public contracts code. I'd really like to see that higher. Supervisor Stopper?
I like that local preference.
Yeah, I'd like to see how legally high we can make it. More dollars we keep in our county, the better.
Yeah, we could certainly, as we're broaching this and other local projects, especially if that's direction by the board, we could certainly work with the CAO's office, et cetera, to, and I'm not sure if it's qualified immunity code or not, I'm going to look at Megan to answer that question, put her on the spot. But that could certainly be something we look at as our purchasing code to make an adjustment to that. That would be a separate action. But certainly at your discretion, within the guise of the public contract code with local money, you have some discretionary authority for that.
I think you're seeing no further questions?
Thank you very much for your time today, Josh. Appreciate the presentation.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, Chapter 2 of Government Code, Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
All right. Why don't we go down the line. Supervisor Toffinelli? Anything to report?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Supervisor Stopper?
I've had a few meetings, but most notable was yesterday evening. I went to Sacramento, attended the Labor Legislative Mixer. Lot of people there from the SB 1 funds that are getting pushed a lot more locally into our rural areas because of the way it was written. So, we're thankful for that. You know, a lot of very involved people there, the governor, multiple senators, assemblymen, I mean, all the way from Bigelow all the way up to Gavin Newsom, and that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Hey, right, Supervisor. Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, we had two new businesses open in District 4 here over the weekend. Had a great chili cook-off for the Coppropolis Fire District last Saturday. We'll be meeting with Sierra Nevada Conservancy this Thursday, and we'll have the Resource Conservation District and a couple of other representatives there. The lake at Tullock will be back to normal level by Memorial Day, just so everybody is aware, if you'd like to use your boat. And also, keep in mind, two-thirds of the state of Nebraska has been affected by the flooding, along with the western portion of the state of Iowa and most of them is a part of Missouri. That's not over, as they start to deal with that issue. Their recovery process is going to include not just homes, but cattle and feed and food for you and I, so to speak, if you want to put it in that direction. So, it is a major devastation, and I don't think that we really understand at this point as to what that's going to impact on our food supplies throughout the nation. So, just keep those people in mind. They're a very resilient group, and I think they'll survive it. But we need to keep them in our prayers.
So, did you, did you eat a lot of chili?
I do not want to see another bowl of chili for a while, let me tell you.
I want to judge the cupcake contest and ruin me. Supervisor Callaway?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. I have nothing to report, except I just want to remind you guys, I will be going to Washington, DC next week. I'll fly out on Monday, I'll return on Thursday. We are working with MEA on the agenda, which I haven't seen yet, and the topics. So, you'll stay within the bounds of our legislative agreed-upon agenda. So, hopefully, I'll come back with maybe a few new friends and, God help us, maybe a buck.
Keep talking about wagon trail, please.
Wagon trail, and give us...
We've got the list.
We've got the list. Thank you very much. This meeting, oh, excuse me. Sorry. Mr. CRO?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just put the wrong button.
Not in council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that this coming Monday, April 1st, is the deadline to form, file your Form 700.
Uh-huh. On Form 700, we will stand adjourned.